I just want everybody to. Good evening, buenas noches, and welcome to the first public hearing to the FY 2027 capital budget and the FY 2027 2032 capital improvements program, better known as the CIP. Oh, you guys are all excited. Great. Let me say this part in Spanish. Tenemos un traductora atrás. Si usted necesita traducción en español, por favor, vaya a la mesa de atrás para apuntarse para que le puedan proveer traducción esta noche. Gracias. Tonight's hearing will also be broadcast live on television and MCPS media. The second CIP public hearing will be held next Tuesday, October 28, 2025, right here at 6:00 p.m. All available speaking slots for the second public hearing have been filled. The board appreciates the high level of engagement and feedback it receives through the community's participation in the CIP process. The board will take action on the superintendent's recommended for FY 2027 capital budget and FY 2027 2032 capital improvements program at the Board Business Meeting on Thursday, November 20, 2025. As always, board members look forward to both hearing and thoughtfully considering your input as we prepare to review and take action on the CIP. So we are joined this evening by Dr. Taylor and several MCPS staff. As we begin, I will ask our board members to introduce themselves. I would start on my right.
Good evening. Good to see a full house here today. My name is Laura Stewart, and I'm representing District Four.
Good evening. Rita Montoya, Board Member at Large.
Good evening. Brenda Wolf, District Five. I just wanted to let you know that some of our board members are stuck in traffic on the Beltway.
Good evening. Natalie Zimmerman, I'm representing District Two.
And good evening. Once again, my name is Grace Rivera-Overman. I represent District One. Dr. Taylor, would you like to introduce the members of your staff so the public knows who is joining us?
Thank you so much. I'll actually let them introduce themselves, and we'll start with Mr. Adnan Moon, who's our Chief Operations Officer. And if you'd like to lead the introductions of your team, that'd be great.
Sure. Yeah. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for coming. Adnan Moon, Chief of District Operations. And with me here is Ms. Andrea Swatoka. She's our Deputy Chief of Facilities. And we have Julie Morris here. She's our Director of Planning, Design, and Construction. DJ Connolly, our Capital Budgets Manager, and Jamie Duffy. He's the Director of Maintenance for Montgomery County Public Schools.
Thank you so much for the introductions. Tonight, board members will have the opportunity to hear from the community via in-person testimony or by audio or video presentations. Written testimonies of those who signed up for tonight's hearing will be available on board docs no later than tomorrow morning. We will begin the testimony for each stakeholder group with in-person speakers. When your name is called, please push the flat button and speak clearly and directly into the microphone. A yellow light and single beep indicates you have 30 seconds remaining. A red light and repeating beeps signal the time has expired and your comments must conclude. Once you have finished speaking, press the same button to turn off the microphone. Following the in-person speakers for each stakeholder group, audio and video testimonies will be played. We will begin with elected officials and municipal representatives, who will each have five minutes. So I will be calling your names. Can I please have Mr. Kirk Gilbert, Councilmember of Tacoma Park City Council? Alan Hobbs, Commissioner, Town of Poolsville? Amy Wesselik, Councilmember of the City of Tacoma Park? So are we missing Ms. Amy Wesselik? Okay, she's probably stuck in traffic, like some of my colleagues. Okay. Mr. Gilbert, if you'd like to begin. You have the button in front of you, right there? There you go.
Thank you.
Thinking you have five minutes.
And thank you for having me. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Kirk Gilbert, and I serve as the Ward Four Councilmember for the City of Tacoma Park, which is where the Piney Branch Elementary School is located. On behalf of Mayor Cersei and the Tacoma Park City Council, I want to reaffirm our city's strong support for the future of the Piney Branch Elementary School. First, I want to thank the Superintendent and the school district for including Piney Branch in the capital improvement program. Our community truly appreciates your recognition of the school's needs and your commitment to its future. Tacoma Park is home to nearly 18,000 residents with a growing number of young families. More than a quarter of our population is under 18, and almost 7% are under the age of five. These numbers highlight our community's urgent need for safe, welcoming schools, and robust recreational spaces. Founded in 1971 through land provided by the city via an MOU in partnership with the Board of Education and community members, Piney Branch was built to be more than just a school. It was built to be a community anchor. But at just 1.9 acres, it's the smallest school site in the county, leaving no space for temporary classrooms and very limited outdoor areas. Today, Piney Branch faces real challenges: aging infrastructure, classrooms without natural light, and not enough capacity to meet enrollment changes. These conditions impact both learning and our children and staff's well-being. We also want to highlight the importance of the recreational facilities. We urge you to include an indoor gymnasium that meets or exceeds the current gym size and allows for community use. And please maintain the pool. It's very important to our community. As a former Piney Branch student, this issue was personal to me. My friends and I, as children, many of us children of color, learned to swim and be safe in the water right there at Piney Branch Elementary School. Learning to swim early is a life-saving skill, I think we all know, especially since drowning rates remain disproportionately high among youth of color. The Piney Branch community still reflects that diversity, and access to the pool continues to save lives and build confidence. As a volunteer with the Recreation Department in their programs, I have seen firsthand how essential a larger gymnasium with bleacher seating is, not only for our students but for the wider community. The school benefits from being able to host its own assemblies and graduation ceremonies right there on site. Additionally, after-school and weekend recreation activities are well-attended, and thanks in large part to the ample seating, which greatly enhances the experience for the children and their families. I spent 27 years in law enforcement, and I worked right there in the city of Tacoma Park at that police department. And it's right there next to the school. The Recreation Department is housing that same building. And I watched during my career children walk the same route I did from those mid-level, high-rise apartment buildings on Maple Avenue, from one of any of the eight. And I know that many of those kids walked alone with their friends or by themselves, and their parents felt comfortable that they could do that, knowing that the Recreation Department and the Police Department was right there to watch over them. And many of them couldn't be there to take their kids to those programs at the pool and at that larger-sized gym. And I know how important it is to our community that that continues. Supporting Piney Branch isn't just about maintaining the building, it's about equity, opportunity, and community connection. So on behalf of Tacoma Park, I ask you to continue the partnership that created Piney Branch and to keep it a place where all children can learn, play, and thrive safely. Tacoma Park would not be the same without Piney Branch serving our community as it has for the last 50 years. Thank you again for your dedication to Piney Branch, to our students, and to our shared future.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to take the time to discuss why Poolsville High School would benefit from having a new artificial turf field. Poolsville High School is renowned for its commitment to academic excellence, extracurricular participation, fostering a strong sense of community. As Poolsville High School continues to grow and evolve, it is essential to invest in the facilities that support both the student achievement and well-being. One significant opportunity for improvement is the installation of the new artificial turf field. The following testimony highlights the reasons for supporting the installation at the high school and benefits it to bring students, staff, and our great community. Current challenges with existing athletic facilities. Currently, Poolsville High School relies on natural grass fields for outdoor sports and activities. Our various challenges associated with the fields are as such. Weather vulnerability. Grass fields can become muddy and unsafe during wet conditions, leading to frequent game cancellations and/or rescheduling. Maintenance costs. Regular mowing, watering, fertilizing, and repair work are required to keep the natural grass fields playable, which incurs significant annual expenses. Limited usage. Heavy use of the grass fields can quickly wear down, forcing closures for repair and limiting the access for practices, games, PE classes, and also the community. Modernization. Poolsville is the only MCPS modernization project that has not featured improvements to its current athletic campus. In fact, two fields, two athletic fields were removed due to changes for the design of our new renovation project, specifically expansion of the student and staff parking lot and the approved forest conservation plan. Shared fields. Poolsville also maintains a partnership with Whitman High School to utilize their field facilities during the spring sports preseason. However, this requires some students to find transportation to and from that facility. The addition of a new field would provide significant advantages for our spring sports programs, including baseball, lacrosse, and softball. Benefits of an artificial field. Transitioning to an artificial field offers numerous advantages as such. Consistent playability. Artificial turf maintains a uniform surface year-round regardless of weather conditions, ensuring the games or practices can proceed as scheduled. Also allows MCPS to maintain the game schedule and eliminate the need to reschedule contests and the respected officials. Durability. Turf fields withstand heavy use, allowing multiple teams, classes, and organizations to share the space without the risk of surface deterioration. Reduced maintenance. Artificial turf requires minimal upkeep, saving money on labor, water, big problem for Poolsville, fertilizer, paint, and repair cost. Safety. Modern artificial turf is designed with a shock-absorbing layer to minimize injuries and provide a safer playing environment for students. Environmental impact. Turf fields eliminate the need for harmful pesticides and fertilizers and reduce water consumption associated with natural grass maintenance. Equity. Per page 46 of the July 30, 2024 Office of Legislative Oversight Report, MCPS equity considerations included: MCPS representatives believe the construction of synthetic turf athletic fields at high schools lead to more equitable use of the fields. They are as follows. Grass fields result in limited availability and often, as a result, enduring gender and sport equity is extremely challenging. When use of grass fields has to be limited, players may have to travel to alternate playing fields, which is more of a difficult for populations who have transportation challenges and concerns. Athletes who practice on a different surface than a game is, may be at a disadvantage. Schools with artificial turf have more time available for youth and community games, providing a stronger pipeline for participation. Schools with artificial turf have an additional piece or teaching space for physical education, allowing for more consistent surfaces. Beyond school use, an artificial turf field would serve as an extremely valuable asset to the Poolsville community. Local youth leagues and recreational teams will utilize the field, foster stronger community bonds, and generate a better environment for healthier lifestyles. The field could also host regional tournaments and events, bringing positive attention to Poolsville High School, its students, and the community. In closing, I just want to thank you for taking the time to listen and my consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Councilmember Wesselik. Glad you're here. You can, you may, no, no need, no need. You may begin.
My name is Amy Weselik.
Oh, turn your, your mic. Just push the button. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Amy Weselik. I am the Ward Six Tacoma Park City Councilmember. And on behalf of the mayor and city council, including my colleague, Councilmember Gilbert, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I represent the most southeastern part of Montgomery County, as well as home to the Tacoma Langley Crossroads at New Hampshire Avenue and University Boulevard, one of, if not the, home to the most diverse immigrant population in the state of Maryland. I'm also here as a mother of two young children, one currently enrolled in first grade at Tacoma Park Elementary School. She and her classmates are scheduled to attend Piney Branch Elementary School for third through fifth grade. We want to thank Superintendent Thomas for including Piney Branch Elementary School in his proposed CIP, and we strongly urge you to support his proposed changes regarding Piney Branch Elementary School. Piney Branch was built in 1971, over 50 years ago, and has had no substantial revitalization since then. Many classrooms have no natural light. All major systems, like HVAC and plumbing, are at or near the end of their useful lives. In the recent facility conditions assessment that you all did and evaluated over 60 elementary and secondary schools, Piney Branch had the worst score. I've been asking parents and kids their thoughts on Piney Branch Elementary. One student who just graduated from the school told me how one classroom could be freezing cold while the classroom next door is as hot as 90 degrees, and she knew this because the teacher had a thermometer in his classroom. She also shared an anecdote about the day the sewage line was redirected, and the smell was so noxious that classes moved to stairwells and masks were handed out to the kids. And this was just one of many stories that the council has heard from parents, students, and school staff. I also strongly support creating more holding schools down county. We are so grateful that the superintendent's plan recommends converting Sligo Creek Elementary School to a holding school for our Piney Branch kids during construction. Parents I've spoken to all have had the same concerns about construction. None argued whether or not the school needed improvement. It is exceedingly obvious to all who have spent time there. The biggest concern parents have raised was how far the current school location holding school options were. Specifically, what would the commute be like for such young kids? Is it safe? How challenging would it be for parents to engage in a school that is very far away from their neighborhood? The holding school options currently available for Piney Branch families are Grovener and Fairland Elementary Holding Centers. So if you think about it, would you rather your eight-year-old child going on a school bus about 10 miles on the Beltway to and from school, or each way? Eight miles away, up and down Route 29? Or less than four miles along Sligo Creek Parkway? Having our kids closer will be a huge improvement for their learning, recreational time, and caregivers' abilities to support. caregivers' abilities to support their school community. So thank you again for your consideration, and please support the superintendent's proposed changes for Piney Branch Elementary School and for more holding schools down county. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I believe that concludes our lecture official's testimony, so we are going to move on to, we will now call on MCPS's students, who will each have three minutes. We actually have one student tonight, so Oliver Guim, student at DuPhile Elementary School, please come forward. Yes. You push the see a button right there at the bottom? Do you see a button? There you go. Yep, you are all set. Take your time.
If you'd like to sit, you can go ahead and sit down.
My name is Olivier, and I am a fourth grade student from DuPhif Elementary. I am very shy and always struggle to make new friends. I still have some close childhood friends, though. One girl named Ann from Cold Spring Elementary. I've played with her ever since I was two. Another one is Rohan from Lakewood, my friend from Cub Scouts. They support me when I am sad and help me socialize. All of them will go to Wooton, but I might, I might not because of the boundary study. I want to be with my friends, so please, no, 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 I want to be with my friends, so please don't make me go to another school. Please make me go to Wooton. Sorry, the speech is short anyways.
I see political life in his future. That was great. It's always great to hear from our students. And you know what? As adults, some people have little phobia testifying, so kudos to Olivier for coming and having the courage to do so. With that, we're going to now move into associations and organizations. They each get five minutes. So I am going to call the first, oh, actually, we have exactly six, I believe. That was easy. So would Mark Pharo from MCPS Athletic Booster, President of the Club, please come up? Would Lupe Rohr, Manor Lake Civic Association, please come up? Would Link Howing, Fair Access for Western Montgomery, please come up? Would Bridget Howe, President of MCCPTA, please come up? Would Davis Stein, President of MCA, please come up? And Christine Handy, President of MCAAP, MCBOA? Is, is Dr. Handy here? Not yet? Okay. Well, she's the last in the group, so maybe she'll get here. Mark, would you please start with your testimony?
Hi, I'm Mark Pharo. We get together, every, all the Booster, Athletic Booster Presidents get together every, twice a year with Jeff Sullivan, talk about athletic issues. And one of the issues that is a big problem at some schools is not having artificial turf fields. And the person from Poolsville pretty much hit everything that I was going to say, so I'm probably gonna be a little short on this, but I agree with everything he said. I just wanted to expand on a couple things, like the community use part. Right now, a lot of, like, if you have a grass field, it's very hard for athletic directors to open that field up to the public, because you just, if you're limiting your use on it, there's no way that they're going to let other people use it when you're limiting your own athletic use on it. Now, if you have artificial turf fields, you don't have that problem. You can open the fields up to all kinds of groups. And what I'd like to see with that is somehow the MCPS partner with, like, direct departments to get them more use of the fields, and even a lot of the youth athletic groups in the areas, especially in low-income areas. Like, I can tell you, Paint Branch, last year, all winter long, there was a couple soccer groups that were using the field, even when there was a third of the field was covered with snow, they were still out there using it. The reason they were there and not the local teams was probably because of the cost. Costs a lot of money to rent the fields, so you have kids whose parents can probably pay $2,000 or $3,000 a year for a season of eight, of travel soccer or lacrosse or whatever it is, where the kids in lower-income areas can't afford that, so they kind of get pushed out of being able to use those high-quality fields. And I'd really like to see, like, local athletic directors partner with local youth teams, especially in the areas where they can't afford to do it, and their practice on sub-quality fields. Try and just, it's just, it's just an equity thing as far as that. And I know that this budget, the recommendation for the athletic fields is going to go to the council and the county executive. And I know county executive doesn't want them, and the council hasn't, does, I don't feel like a lot of them really want it, but I think that's a point that needs to be made about how much community use can be achieved on these fields other than just school use, because you're getting more bang for the bucks. You're getting the school use during the day, like Paint Branch, they have, the gym classes are there, then you have the, the athletic practices, you have games, you never have cancellations. After that, you should be able to have those fields packed all the time with the local teams. And I just think that's the carrot that has to be put out there, especially for council members and county executives who aren't really thrilled about the whole artificial turf field issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rohr?
Hello. I'm Lupe Rohr, President of the Manor Lake Civic Association. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak today, and I'm here today to advocate for capital improvements for the Northlake Elementary School used as a holding school and for a permanent solution for the MCPS Alternative Education Program that is currently using the school. As you recall, on September 4, I spoke to the board about the relocation of the portion of the MCPS Alternative Education Program to our community's Northlake Holding School upon the termination of the lease at the Blair Ewing Plum Orchard Facility, as well as the poor condition of the Northlake School itself. While the community remains disappointed in the lack of transparency we previously received from MCPS and the Board of Education, we are encouraged that MCPS has proposed a long-term location, and we want to thank Superintendent Taylor for hearing our concerns. As you are aware, MCPS and the board made the decision to move the alternative education to Northlake back in February, though our community was not informed until the summer. Between the lack of transparency and the lack of communication, our community knew very little about the AEP or the relocation. What we learned was that the Northlake Holding School is completely inappropriate for our alternative education program. The school was built as an elementary school and never intended for an older population, and it lacks the security and educational infrastructure to serve the students and staff. Additionally, its location deep within our residential neighborhood presents community safety concerns and a significant hardship for the students. As Peter Moran noted in our August walk-in talk at Northlake, students may require transfers on public transportation and a half-mile walk through the neighborhood from the closest bus stop. What we also learned through this ordeal is that the AEP itself has been poorly represented and neglected by MCPS capital improvement planning. Our community appreciates the importance of this program and is both surprised and concerned with the historic lack of support it has received, particularly in such an affluent county where there has been money invested into many schools like Walt Whitman and Northwood High Schools. That said, we are encouraged that the AEP is finally receiving the attention it deserves in the 2027 and 2032 Capital Improvement Program. MCPS has recommended renovations of the Spring Mill Center for Down County Alternative Education Programs to open in August of 2029. During construction, MCPS stated it anticipated that the program where we locate to the Fairland Center in August of 2027 for two years until construction at the permanent location is complete. We support this investment, and we strongly urge the board to support Superintendent Taylor's capital improvement plan proposal. In the meantime, since the program will remain in our neighborhood for the next two years, we ask that MCPS and the Blair Ewing Program follow through with the punch lists of safety and security concerns voiced by our community, including the landscaping and maintenance of the grounds, fallen tree limbs that have not been removed, the playgrounds are overgrown and not maintained, tree trimming, the trees have not been trimmed that are blocking the security cameras, and portables are in deteriorating condition. And I sent the photos. Beyond the AEP, we are here to ask that MCPS and the board prioritize the capital improvement of the Northlake Elementary School itself. With the significant investments proposed for schools across the county, Northlake as a holding school is a critical part of the plan. However, it is an aging facility and needs as much, if not more, improvement than those schools identified for renovation. Its HVAC and electrical were listed as end-of-life in MCPS's facilities review back in 2018, and its roofing and plumbing are also flagged. The numerous portables at the school have sat unused for several years and are in poor condition, and the walkways are in disrepair. We believe it is in the best interest of MCPS and consistent with the intent of the capital improvement plan to address the Northlake Holding School early on, making it safe and suitable for the volume of students which will rotate through as their home schools are being renovated. As I mentioned when I spoke last month, beyond the Manor Lake Civic Association that I serve, residents of Manor Lake and Flower Valley have established a Northlake Task Force to represent community interests with the Northlake facility now and in the future. We ask that MCPS and the board keep our community informed and work with us as the capital improvement plan is reviewed, approved, and executed. We appreciate the magnitude of the investments proposed in the 2027 to 2032 MCPS Capital Improvement Plan, and we support the improvement proposed to provide a permanent suitable location for the alternative education program. We also understand the important role that Northlake Holding School will play in the execution of these plans, and we ask that MCPS and the board prioritize critical improvements to Northlake before it is put into the use for the larger student population. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Handy. Glad you're here. Hello, it's Bridget Howe. You're next. Nice to see you.
Thank you, and I must say, as I started out, that it is so unfair that you would schedule me to testify after that wonderful young student, but I'll do my best.
Okay, let's, let's do our best.
Thank you for this opportunity to support the installation of turf and the renovation of our stadium field at Poolsville High School. I'm Link Howing and represent the Fair Access Committee for the Western County. The Fair Access Committee was started in 2018, and it's a committee of the town of Poolsville. Its creation was really a direct response to decades of failure on the part of the county to support funding to modernize our then woefully outdated high school. I was a PTA leader from the mid-1980s all the way until my last daughter left school in the 2000s. I led her efforts to try to get our high school modernized, and I failed miserably. As a community, we did all the right things. We testified repeatedly before the Board of Education. We got our parents and students together, they'd come down and visit with the board at the same time we testified. We repeatedly got on the modernization list, only to find at the end of the year that somehow our priority was not as high as other priorities. We finally decided that we had to take another approach, and so we created a committee whose sole purpose is to keep in regular contact with our leaders at the county and state level, to inform them and educate them about our needs, and to continuously dialogue with them about ways to improve the lives of those who live in the Western County. Part of the impetus for this effort was not just to ensure that modernization of our high school went forward. Believe it or not, there were actually efforts to close PHS during the late 70s and early 80s. There were also a proposal at one time to close Monocacy Elementary School in 2009. Our rural area is only about 15,000 people versus about 1.1 million in the rest of the county. In most communities, schools are important parts of life, but in the case of us, they are a vital hub for us in part because we have so few county services or facilities nearby. It really is a vital part of the lifeblood of our community. We faced inequity even when it came to the PHS modernization project, however. When the county finally approved funding for the modernization, we all celebrated, and I want to thank the board for making that decision. But we found as the design process went forward, the school system tried to back out in providing us with the school our students, parents, and residents deserve. For example, the first design would have cut out the original gym for the high school and would not have expanded our main gym at all, despite the fact that it was the smallest in the county by far. Other high schools have both an auxiliary gym and a main gym. And when our girls went to the state championship in 2018, many close friends and relatives who wanted to attend some of the games were not able to do so because our gym was too small. We also discovered when the PHS project was approved that the county was not going to modernize, update, and redo all our playing fields. As far as I can tell, on other projects where a school is being rebuilt and modernized or built from scratch, they usually do modernization of the playing fields as part of the entire project. Again, our, our school was treated inequitably. We now understand the installation of turf field for our stadium is in proposed CIP programs for the coming year, and I want to thank Thomas Taylor and his staff for their understanding and willingness to listening to our needs. We ask your support for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Howe, you're next.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Bridget Howe, President of the Montgomery County Council of PTAs. This is the fourth or fifth time I've testified in some PTA capacity at a CIP hearing, and when I looked at my past testimonies, I can see that some needles have moved, and thank you for that. Dr. Taylor, your CIP proposal was bold, and we commend you for telling the hard truths about our facility needs, how we got here, what needs to happen for us to catch up over the next couple of decades, and how the data to inform these decisions will be crunched. Frankly, though, it was a lot to process. You really like slides, especially some of the specific proposals like closing a school. And that is on top of all of the other things to process related to our facilities and boundaries this fall, as well as our programs. It's been evident throughout all of these big changes that these three things are inextricably tied. Capacity impacts attendance, impacts boundary lines, impacts program availability, and it all is just one big interdependent mix. And that's before we even talk about transportation. So in last night's MCCPTA board meeting with our cluster coordinators and committee chairs, I asked our board meter, board members how they were feeling about this avalanche of information right now, and also how they keep it straight and how they communicate to local PTAs. And here are some of the answers that I got. Quote, "It feels like a giant game of Jenga, and I'm just waiting for the wrong block to be pulled." Quote, "It's such a whirlwind, I can't keep up." Quote, "I'm drowning in a sea of news." Quote, "It's a roller coaster." And then my favorite, quote, "You know those airplanes that let astronauts experience zero gravity when they plummet nose-first? That's what it feels like right now." I share this to say that there's a lot going on to keep track of related to CIP, boundaries, and all of this. And I am, as always, going to encourage you to prioritize thorough, intentional, and timely information sharing, as well as a commitment to authentic engagement to inform the solutions you arrive at. We need to move from this current state where timelines don't always line up, yes, but it is really challenging as an advocate or a parent or community member trying to keep track of all of this, to attend an online meeting about a boundary proposal where they show maps, and then the next day there's a headline that says, "Hey, just kidding, we might use that school for a holding school for a while." What does that, what does that end up meaning? The CIP is already confusing. This doesn't help. In-person boundary information sessions to date have been primarily showcases, not opportunities for group dialogue. The virtual boundary information sessions have disabled chat functions and Q&amp;A functions, making the communications one-way and making it harder for attendees to get their questions answered. What if instead, MCPS modeled intentional engagement and information sharing? Last night's virtual call about the CIP was a great example. You kept the Q&amp;A open. People could react in real time, they could see what their neighbors and fellow community members were reacting and responding to. Questions were being answered in real time, and it was a great start. And at a minimum, that open Q&amp;A feature should be standard for any MCPS webinar. Also, in today's Things to Know, I did see information about a series of in-person combined program and boundary sessions that will have translation, and they are located all over the county. Thank you. That is the minimum, and it should have happened long before this point, but please ensure these sessions allow for dialogue, not just presentations. What I will say is that what's being shared now is a vision for the future where we catch up with an immense backlog, we get our fair share of capital dollars, we look intentionally at the right sizes and locations for schools, and we have schools where kids are educated in safe, clean environments that are conducive for 21% in safe, clean environments that are conducive for 21st century learning. That sounds great. We all want that, but we also need the detailed roadmap of how we're going to get there. If Sims is closed to become a holding school, how is the shift mapped out between the other middle schools? If Crown becomes a holding school, what happens to the other boundaries over the next few years? If council can't fund this historic request, what is on the non-recommended reductions list? I could give more examples, but I'll defer to the folks who live in those areas to do so. Finally, we build -- I'm going to urge you to take a look at each and every project that is currently in the CIP, regardless of phase, to prioritize safe pedestrian and cyclist access. We build beautiful schools. We prioritize driver and bus access. We have the opportunity to be a leader in the country for safe pedestrian and cyclist access if we look at the way we construct our buildings and facilities differently. Thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing testimonies from my PTA colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Davis Stein?
Good evening, Superintendent Taylor and members of the Board of Education. I'm David Stein, and President of the Montgomery County Education Association, representing over 14,000 certificated employees across MCPS. We're here tonight to discuss the capital improvement plan, and I'm glad, because I'm here to tell you, MCPS infrastructure is in desperate need of improvement and a lot of capital. We commend the superintendent for laying out the reality of the situation. It's not the ask that is big, it is the need that is big, and a need that has too long been ignored as it festers and grows bigger every year. MCA members, students, and parents across this district witnessed firsthand the lack of sustained investment in our schools and workplaces every single day. They see it in their school buildings with black mold expanding across bulletin boards, ceilings, tiles, and floors. They see it when they breathe in air polluted by mold spores. They see it in the moisture that collects in pools and hallways and classroom floors, causing them, both educators and students, to slip. They feel it when temperatures spike during our humid and hot seasons, making it harder for educators to teach and for students to learn. They feel it when temperatures plummet during the winter months, forcing them to wear coats indoors. They see it in auditoriums that are falling apart and in buildings that are literally crumbling. They see it in their office buildings, for which priority is understandably lower than schools, but still our workplace for our members and are, in many cases, unacceptable and unhealthy. I know every board member has not only heard of, but have seen these challenges in person, and for some of you, I know you have experienced them firsthand. Are these the conditions in all of our buildings? No, of course not. But the reality is that they are the conditions in too many learning spaces and work sites, and quite frankly, it's unacceptable. We know that without increased capital investment, things are going to go from bad to worse and quickly. And it is because of these ongoing infrastructure challenges that we need a bold plan to build classrooms and buildings where students and educators can learn and educate without fearing that they'll slip on floors, or breathe in mold-ridden air, or see the buildings around them literally crumble down. It is because of that that MCA supports the robust capital improvement proposal that boldly calls for $2.7 billion in capital improvement over the next six years. But to make this bold plan a reality, we're going to need to speak about building and spending another type of capital, political capital. If we are going to make this capital improvement budget proposal a reality, we need to roll up our sleeves and get to work. Unfortunately, this is not the Field of Dreams capital budget. We can't just build a proposal and expect people to come and support it. I know MCA members are willing to partner with the superintendent and the board to persuade voters, county council, county executive, to support measures that will fund long-term investments in our schools. We are willing to do what needs to get done, rally, lobby, organize. We will advocate for what we know our schools and our students need. And while these actions are important, they are insufficient on their own if we do not have a strategy to secure this budget, especially as communities in this county, including a number of my members and our students' families, face economic challenges and uncertainty. And so I'm asking the leaders that are assembled here tonight, educators, parents, students, community members, to come together, to commit together, to work together, to educate our communities on why it is so vital for Montgomery County to raise the bonds and raise the revenues needed so that we can fund these important changes. If we work together, I know that we can achieve great things. As I said, the need is enormous and the challenge is daunting. We have acknowledged the problem now, and that's step one, but now we need to get to actually fixing it, and that's where we need to come together and do the work. Our students and our educators deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Dr. Handy, you're next.
All right. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Dr. Taylor. As President of the Montgomery County Association of Administrators and Principals, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about an issue that directly affects the health, morale, and productivity of hundreds of MCPS employees and ultimately the students and families we serve. The Carver Educational Services Center is not just another office building. It is a living monument to history, built in the early 1950s as George Washington Carver High School, the only high school for African-American students in Montgomery County during segregation. It stands as a symbol of perseverance, access to education, and the community's deep respect for learning, and we deeply honor that legacy. But tonight, I must be equally honest, we are now asking that this legacy be met with leadership action, because the truth is, the building is in serious disrepair. The Carver facility has served our district well for decades, but time has caught up with it. Mold is a chronic issue that compromises air quality, causing headaches and respiratory concerns, and allergic reactions among employees. There are reports of bugs literally biting or nipping staff members around their ankles and legs, and beneath the carpet lies asbestos, which makes even basic flooring repairs complicated and costly. Air circulation is poor, humidity is high, and some rooms have visible water damage and musty odors. I want to thank Chief Mamoun and Andrea for your recent efforts to address these issues. We are long past the point, though, where temporary fixes or Band-Aid solutions will suffice. If Carver continues serving as the operational heart of MCPS Central Services, it must be included in the capital improvement plan. When employees spend their days in an environment that impacts their health, it affects everything: their focus, their morale, and their sense of dignity in the workplace. This is not just a facilities issue, it's a human issue. The very people who support our schools and our principals, our students, and our district operations every day deserve to work in conditions that reflect the same respect and care we expect in our classrooms. I know that funding is tight and that our capital budget must always prioritize our schools, but I urge you to recognize this truth: The conditions in which our employees work directly influence the conditions in which our students learn. When the central office staff is not well, when they are struggling with illness, discomfort, or frustration from an unsafe workplace, it diminishes their ability to serve our schools effectively. And oh, by the way, our warehouse facility is also severely dilapidated and must be addressed in this conversation. Employees there, too, are doing important work that keeps this district running: receiving materials, supporting logistics, and maintaining essential operations. It is unacceptable to think that, in a county as resourceful and respected as Montgomery County, that we would consider those working conditions acceptable for anyone. Now, I'm not suggesting that everything can be done overnight, but leadership requires vision, prioritization, and action. We can plan phased renovations, relocations, or reconstructions, but we may need to be creative and strategic. We can honor the history of this building by modernizing it in a way that continues to serve the people of Montgomery County with pride. The Carver Educational Services Center is a cornerstone of MCPS history, but it should not become a cautionary tale of neglect. It deserves attention, investment, and care. So tonight, I'm asking this board and our superintendent to take a bold step, to commit to assessing, planning, and including Carver, and yes, our warehouse facility, in the upcoming capital improvement plan. Let's ensure that the places where our employees serve are worthy of their service. And like my colleague David Stein, you know, we at McCab are willing to stand in the trenches with you as we advocate for the funding that is needed to make this happen. We honor the past best when we build for the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Handy. Appreciate it. Thank you to all for your testimony. I'd like to welcome my colleague and the President of the Board, Ms. Yang.
Good evening, everyone.
She can share with us, because I know she was at a very nice event.
Yeah, I was at another MCPS event. It's a big school district. Every day, wonderful things happen, difficult things happen, and I'm glad to be here with you right now. Before we move to the next session, I would like to give opportunities for my board members to ask questions and give comments, and I promise to catch up on all your testimony, and I know that we have them in board docs. Thank you. I'm going to start from Ms. Stewart.
Yes. First of all, again, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I know the roads were busy, so some of you might have even had to delay dinner, et cetera, so I appreciate that. I would like to first ask if we could just very quickly review what the plans are for Carver and the warehouse. I know what it is in this budget, but if you could just quickly overview.
Yeah, absolutely. And if Mr. Mamoun, you want to retell the timeline, what I can tell you is that we do have a warehouse space that is identified for board action as part of this proposal and is a part of a board action item at your October 30th meeting. To have a warehouse facility that is actually right-sized for our district, as you know, the warehouse, when it was originally procured, was for a school district that had 100,000 fewer students, and was 80 years ago, using materials that were reclaimed from World War II. So that should be solved post-haste, starting immediately. And Carver Educational Services Center is in your capital improvement plan in the outline years, I believe, Year Five and Year Six, carrying over into a future Year Seven. But Ms. Swiatoka and Mr. Mamoun, if you want to illuminate that further, you can.
Yeah, you were absolutely correct. We will be bringing the board consent item next Thursday regarding the warehouse. There is capital funding under materials management building relocation as part of that consideration. There was $10 million that was added. And then under, and this is under your countywide projects, there is the central office headquarters, parentheses, CESE replacement. We show funding starting in FY '29 through '32, and this six-year CIP, and as Dr. Taylor referenced, with additional funding showing in the out-years as well.
Okay, that's really good news. I just want to explain to the public, many of you are in schools, so you don't hear about some of the issues with our offices, but there was a lot of concern, which you heard from Dr. Handy, and stories of bugs, rodents, et cetera. So we really do need to take care of our employees so they can take care of our kids. The other issue I just wanted to touch on, because we haven't had the conversation at the board table about this recently, and it is, I do see in our budget the outdoor play space and athletic infrastructure plan. I'm not exactly clear what schools are considered in this plan, and I do think we need to have a deeper discussion about artificial turf and natural grass fields, plus and minuses, how they are or aren't open to the public. Do they always have to be scheduled, or are they ever, if they're not being used on the weekends, do the public just get access to the fields? There's a lot of questions, I think, that we could get into, so I'm hoping to have that discussion at a later date before we make all these important decisions. This CIP is chock full of needs, and I think down the line, we might have to make hard decisions, so I want to be ready for that and have all the information ready to go.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya?
Do you want me to just add one real quick?
Sorry, I missed that.
So we have not gotten to all of the countywides yet in the first work session. We do plan to bring those on November 4th in the second work session. The community has very done their part, because we do have exhibits available for the breakdown in FY '27 for many of the countywides, which is why some of the folks that have testified have seen that we are proposing the Poolsville turf in FY '27 in that outdoor and athletics play space. So that is available. We have not gotten there quite yet in the work session, but we took note of your comments and happy to have a further discussion.
Oh, by the way, thank you so much. I did dig into the HVAC portion, because to me, that's house-on-fire situation with our HVAC. I did not dig into that portion yet, but this is something, actually, I've advocated so that we can do that and the public can see everything, so that's great.
Ms. Stewart, let me finish this round. Okay, thank you. Ms. Montoya?
Thank you so much. I have a question about the community use of MCPS spaces, and this has come up in other business meetings and work sessions, in the sense of the way that we work with CUPF, which is, I can't even, I don't even remember what the acronym stands for, but it's the county agency that you have to go through to rent these spaces, right?
County use of public facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera-Offen. Because obviously, you know, I personally, I have little kids. It's great when the kids can use fields. We've done Little League, all of those things, but that also costs money because those have to be maintained, whether it's turf, or grass, or what have you. And I think my understanding is that that burden falls on us to pay for that. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And in the next work session, we will have a more detailed discussion. We heard the question at our last meeting, so we are preparing to give an overview of the usage, as far as, you know, facility usage, how many hours that we are seeing across our portfolio, as well as we'll have a little bit detailed conversation about the relationship and the reimbursements that we get from Cuff for the use of facilities.
Okay, wonderful, because again, I think we all want our kids and communities to be able to use the spaces, but we need to be able to anticipate costs and potential conversations that maybe need to be had with our county agency partners to make sure that we can continue to provide that to the community. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf?
Well, I just want to say thank you to everybody that came out tonight. I heard your passion. I appreciate the discussion, and I particularly want to thank Oliver? Olivia?
Olivia.
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 You know, it took a lot of courage for you to come forward, and you did a terrific job, but I'm going to suggest you come back when we're doing the boundary hearings, because I think that you have something to say. So thank you for coming.
Ms. Rivera-Offen? She's the only one that's getting claps for her comment? All right, Ms. Rivera-Offen.
I just would like to say also, thank you all for coming on a Thursday night, a school night. I know you probably have a lot of things to do. Some of you who come from Tuckerville Park, it was not a pleasant drive, I'm sure. Those of you who came from Damascus or Pools, it wasn't a pleasant drive as well. So I just want to say thank you for coming, for testifying, and for being passionate about schools. I do want to ask a little bit about Piney Branch, and I just want to, just for the record, ask Dr. Taylor if, in fact, it has been, I think I did the math, 54 years since that school was touched with any renovations?
Yes, it's had no substantial work done in the school, and the testimony was really well researched. It is actually our smallest footprint in terms of elementary space, and it also is unique in that it does have community space in the form of an oversized gymnasium and a pool, because it does have that shared community space in addition to being a schoolhouse, and it also has the largest number of classrooms without any natural lighter windows.
Okay, so needless to say, it's due. Okay? Okay? So thank you to those folks who came to support and to just bring that to your attention. Fortunately, we do have a lot of schools who are very age, you know, related and have been not touched for decades. I would like to also, very quickly, just concur with my colleagues, Ms. Montoya and Ms. Stewart, about, and thank you so much, because I know you guys have been doing the research for Cuff, for the Center of Use Public Facilities. I had asked that question at the last board meeting, because I really wanted to get an idea of how much usage our schools are being used. I concur that it's important, but also it has a lot of uses and tears to our buildings. So I'm looking forward to that report. And the last thing I would like to ask is about Northlake, the holding school. And Dr. Taylor, if you have any wisdom into it, we heard some testimony tonight about it, and I just wanted to see where we are with the upkeep of security and all those concerns.
Absolutely. I thought the testimony did a really thorough job and was well researched on some of the challenges and needs, and of course, also the game plan. One of the things that we have historically not done a very good job of in MCPS is when we have a holding facility, taking care of that holding facility and making sure that those holding facilities are kept up, and restoring those holding facilities to operational value. And so this is an investment in that space. As you know, any really substantial construction work that we're going to need to do to safely do that construction work, we do need to have holding schools to perform that work. So in a lot of ways, our holding schools are kind of bottlenecks to us being even able to do projects. So making sure that our holding schools are up to snuff and that they are well-maintained is also a priority in this capital improvement program proposal.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. David Stein, when he said, "The ask is not big, the need is big." And I just would like to change, "The need is huge." It's not big, it's huge. Thank you.
Ms. Westje.
Yeah, following up on our excellent testimony by Olivier, which option was being described in that testimony? I'm looking at the study.
In all options, A through D.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I heard some questions from Ms. Rivera-Overman about Piney Branch, and we talked about the limited physical space there. I'm curious if we could give a little bit more information on the pool. We hear a lot about the pool. Can we hear a little bit more about our plans there?
It's worth a visit. Is there anything specific you'd like to know about?
Are we planning to keep the pool?
The current scope for the project in the proposal is with the pool, not without the pool. And to have like facilities, it also comes with a very significant price tag for just that reason, because of the oversized community use facilities, in addition to the complexities of where the construction takes place, because it is on such a small footprint. The topography is also really unfriendly in that particular space, and that does complicate things. The other challenge, of course, is buildable space in the area is a constraint as well. So building onsite is an advantage, but again, to do that project successfully, we would need to move students to a holding school while construction was taking place.
Got it. Thank you for that. And then I have heard some other questions about, like, fields and use of those. I know we're going to get some more information on that. In doing so, if it's not already in the plan, could you also let us know how we decide what kind of field we're going to choose to add to a space? If we're going to use synthetic, or if we're going to go with natural, as well as the installation costs, upkeep costs, the frequency of updates that are required? I know hours of use came up, and then if we could also hear more about any environmental factors? And then I have been digging into the OLL report, but I would also like to see if we have any information on injuries and how that differs between the types of fields.
Thank you. And heat. All right. Thank you, everyone. Do you have one more question?
Yes, I didn't want to ask it, because I wanted to ensure all my colleagues had a chance to, but I just would like to have an update on Carver. It is, it is a building that needs a lot of love, and I just wanted to hear what have we done so far on the building? If our staff is already back, or are we still working on it? For those at home who don't know about this building, it keeps on giving. My first week on the board, I went down to where they do the filming, and I got so lost that I had to text somebody, only to find out there was no Wi-Fi, and I really thought, people are going to find me here three years later. So it is something that is concerning, so if you can just please give us an update, appreciate it.
I'll do this really quick. I will say that our mold situation at Carver Educational Services Center was extreme enough that we offered relocation to our employees that were working in that space, and offered a number of options to them on a temporary basis, because we did need to do a significant cleaning and remediation. We are bringing to close that remediation, because we did have the workforce willing to relocate temporarily, which actually allowed us an opportunity to have access on a quick basis. We are returning that to fully operational status on Monday, so we still have a weekend's worth of work to do. We still have the rest of this week worth of work to do, but we are returning that to full status on Monday.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. And perhaps this will be included in the presentation about CUPF and facility usage and community usage, but I'm wondering if the Tacoma Park, does that also fall under CUPF with Piney Branch Elementary, or is that separate? Because I know sometimes, depending on the locality, things are used in a different way.
It is part of the community use of public facilities system.
Okay, but if the, I mean, when the community goes in, is there then someone from the county, like, manning the door for people to come in to use the pool during non-school hours?
Oh, the pool is under, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the school. The pool is actually separately administered.
But not by MCPS?
No, not for community use.
And so then, and so I'm assuming it's the city, the Tacoma Park?
There's been different contracts over the years. Honestly, I'd have to look into exactly who's operating it now. At one point, it was the county rec department, and at another point, it was a separate nonprofit. So, but no, MCPS is not responsible for community use of the pool. Apologize, I misunderstood.
Okay, so if it's not MCPS and it's not CUPF?
The pool's specific.
I'm going back to the maintenance, right? And I, you know, so then if we're, the upkeep of the facility, I mean, pools take a lot of upkeep in themselves. I grew up in California, a lot of people have pools. It's a whole job in itself. And so I'm just wondering, then, who is responsible for all of that in terms of the actual labor, as well as the costs? Because those are all then things we would need to consider, right?
Yeah, we are not responsible for the maintenance of the pool. The city has a contract for that. We do provide the building's service, operation, cleaning, support for that area.
Right, like our custodial services and things like that, but not the actual pool itself.
Correct.
So the same way, if someone used one of our gyms for an after-school activity, and our custodians, of course, clean that area in a similar way. Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go into the next session of the evening, which is MCCPTA Cluster Representatives, and you each will have five minutes. I'm going to call the first six, Representative Springbrook Cluster, Blake Cluster, Paint Branch Cluster, Sherwood Cluster, Damascus Cluster, and Seneca Valley Cluster reps. Please come to the front. All right, Mr. Wevering, you may start.
I actually did that right.
You did it.
Tonight, let me introduce myself. My name is Heinz Weaverink. I am the vice president for advocacy for MCCPTA, and I'm standing in because Springbrook right now does not have a cluster coordinator. Soon, we will. And I just have to tell staff over there, we spent a lot of time in the Springbrook Cluster in the last few weeks and months, and they have been extraordinary in communication, letting us know what's happening. And the cluster right now has two major projects and a new school under construction, all of which were necessary. So I wanted to clarify that. You know, I've been testifying before this board for a few years now, and always over at the Carver Center. It was my first time in here. You've got a really nice place here. And if we compare it to Carver, it's like comparing some of the schools in MCPS. You know, we, but it'd really be great if they all were like this. And that's a long, hard road. But I am obligated to represent the requests of the folks at White Oak Middle School and Springbrook High School. Their comment was they'd like to have both of those schools replaced, and I'm presenting that with no additional comments. Of course, I do have other comments, and Ms. Wolf would probably be disappointed if I didn't. Dealing with the CIP, the conditions of our school and the current capital request. Dr. Taylor's bomb, I really appreciate it. It's risky. We may have a new superintendent after all of this, but it was absolutely necessary. We are paying for the sins of the past, and that's an expensive tab, because of emissions, poor oversight, failure to maintain our assets, poor planning, and sometimes just indifference. That's what's gotten us here. But this bold proposal, asking for even more money than ever before, that's just the beginning. It moves us to maintain what we have, to take care of our facilities, but it doesn't allow us to really get caught up. We're just leveling out for a while. And I'm paraphrasing him, I have to steal good words somewhere. But when it comes to this big ask, we have to remember, size doesn't count. What you do with it is what's important. And I would hope that with the strong leadership that we have now, that in some cases has been absent in the past, that we take this extra money, couple it with changes in our behaviors and how we do things, make it work, make it last, so that we can continue that long-term plan, and make, not only make MCPS one of the biggest school systems, but let's make it one of the greatest school systems, by giving these kids what they deserve to have. And I would say that if we do it right, great. If we fail in this big ask, it's going to result in a pattern that we cannot sustain. The taxpayers can't, our community can't. We're already struggling. Let's make good use of this one shot. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Blake, who's speaking for Blake? No? Then I'm going to go to Mr. Bassi and Mr. Lewis for the Paint Branch.
Mr. Lewis was not able to join in, a family commitment.
Okay.
I'm glad to share, though. So, good evening from the Paint Branch Cluster. I'm Nicholas Bassi, co-cluster coordinator. And I'd like to begin by expressing gratitude for the recently completed additions at Page and Greencastle Elementary Schools, and request that the replacement of Burtonsville Elementary and the roof at Fairland proceed as scheduled. Now that said, if you've attended these hearings, the CIP hearings during the past several years, you've probably all already heard much of what I'm about to say, and you're probably as tired of hearing our concerns as I am of outlining them to you. Other than the sliver of hope from Dr. Taylor's recent mentions of Banneker Middle School, built in 1974, and Cloverly Elementary School, built in 1961, in recent presentations, little has changed at some of our schools in decades. In fact, the prevailing view from everyone spending time at Banneker is that it must be rebuilt. Despite its current FCI score, virtually every system across the school is in urgent need of replacement. This is true for the leaky roof, for the frequent sewage backups, broken HVAC, out-of-date and possibly out-of-code electrical system, lack of a single master key that opens all doors, the presence of asbestos, and the list goes on and on and on. Similarly, Cloverly's age is especially evident in their bathrooms. In addition to regular sewage backups, the student and staff bathrooms fail to meet current demand, particularly for students with acute toileting needs in the autism and PEP programs. If you haven't already done so, I invite you to read my nine-page letter in June to Dr. Taylor outlining our present CIP, our pressing CIP needs from across the cluster. I included descriptions of a malfunctioning alarm system and inadequate outdoor lighting at Paint Branch High School, insufficient outdoor lighting, ADA parking and bathrooms at Fairland, inadequate traffic management infrastructure at Galway, Cloverly, and Greencastle, which reduces safe access to these elementary schools, boiler problems limiting hot water, including to the kitchen and janitorial areas at Page Elementary, uncontrolled access to the admin suite, warped floors due to roof leaks, poor entrance lighting, and too few indoor security cameras at Brickshane Middle School. As you've heard mentioned by others, Wi-Fi, cellphone, and walkie-talkie dead zones causing security concerns across several schools. And the same HVAC issues you've heard from everyone else, though a malfunctioning unit caused a fire at Greencastle just last week. That's a fun fact. So, Dr. Taylor, I invite you and members of the board to visit Banneker, where we can talk and explore creative solutions. Our concerns are not impacted by the boundary study, and our needs, we believe, if addressed, will support your proposed program changes. So we thank you in advance for your partnership, look forward to hosting you at Banneker and resolving these issues that we've been talking about for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherwood Cluster, Mr. St. Gerard.
It's right here.
Oh, right there.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Honroy St. Gerard. I am a co-Sherwood Cluster Coordinator and Area Vice President for the Northeast Consortium. I have three kids in the system, and thank you this evening for allowing me to comment on the recommended budget. First, I want to express my appreciation for the recent security upgrades at Greenwood Elementary School. While not part of the capital plan before us tonight, this was a long-awaited improvement for our community, and we are grateful. I also hope to see similar progress on safety upgrades, including better lighting, and increased camera coverage at Brook Grove Elementary, Rosa Parks Middle School, and Sherwood High School, where needs remain. Turning to the recommended capital plan, thank you for including HVAC upgrades at Sherwood, High School, Rosa Parks, and a roof replacement at Alney Elementary School. These are meaningful investments for our cluster. I also want to commend the superintendent for putting forward an ambitious plan that advances two critical areas where the county has fallen behind. It makes progress on the backlog of new construction and modernization, and it accelerates the HVAC replacement to improve learning conditions across MCPS. This focus reflects real progress and thoughtful prioritization. However, even with these positive steps, we must go further when it comes to HVAC. This is not a simply matter of waiting or turn for system replacement. Many schools are struggling right now, and there is a growing backlog of basic HVAC maintenance needs that requires attention urgently. At Rosa Parks, while we, again, we appreciate the inclusion in a replacement plan, the existing system is the original 33-year-old building, from the 33-year-old building, and continues to break down. Contractors report that replacement parts are no longer produced and must be retrofitted. Contractors report that replacement parts are no longer produced and must be retrofitted. Our valves do not function properly, which causes severe fluctuations in temperatures. Classrooms reach over 85 degrees in the winter and drop to 16 during warmer months. This disrupts learning, is also costly and wasteful. Excess humidity leads to slippery floors and other hazards. Sherwood High School is experiencing a serious air quality and mold concerns. Teachers first raised these concerns to the PTSA, and multiple attempts to get resolution have continued as recently as this week. Because of the persistence of the issue, members of our community compiled detailed report documenting, documenting these concerns. I have included, I have included that report in the appendix of my submitted testimony with photos and results from independent air quality and mold testing. Sherwood needs remediation while we wait for the scheduled HVAC replacement. Schools not yet on the replacement slate, including Brook Grove and Greenwood, continue to face extreme indoor temperatures that negatively impact student well-being and academic success. Their needs deserve attention as well. The message is the same across our cluster and across the county. HVAC challenges are not isolated, they are systemic. They cannot be solved through capital replacement alone. To improve learning conditions while major projects move forward, I urge the board to consider an increase in the recommended HVAC totals and investing in additional contractor staffing and resources dedicated to HVAC maintenance and repairs. Increasing support in this area would help address the growing backlog of unresolved issues and provide relief for schools that simply cannot wait for long-term projects to begin. I also urge MCPS to apply the same level of data-driven discipline used in capital planning to day-to-day HVAC maintenance and system reliability. We should be analyzing patterns in repair calls and identifying the most frequent replaced components, applying a project management mindset to standardize solutions, proactively stock materials, and reduce emergency response costs. Every student deserves a safe and stable learning environment every school day. That requires both long-term infrastructure investments and short-term maintenance support that keeps current systems operating safely and reliably. I thank you again for the time, and I again stress you and encourage you to look at my submitted appendix from my submitted testimony. And I'll say, before I came here, Dr. Taylor, you mentioned the mold at, at Carver. Same situation is at Sherwood. Again, I stressed that if it's bad enough for your staff at Carver, imagine how it is bad enough at Sherwood for the students who are there right now. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Damascus Cluster.
Yes, hello. Good evening. My name is Joanna Weisner, and I am a Damascus Cluster Coordinator along with Dani Ibarra. We are very happy to learn that Damascus High School is recommended for a new school replacement project. This was certainly welcome news to students, staff, and parents in our community. We have many of the volunteers here tonight that are instrumental in supporting Damascus schools. We also want to recognize the many families who have been advocating on behalf of Damascus over the decades to help us get to this point. The timeline for this project is of extreme importance. We understand the planning and design needs as well as the construction timeline that puts the completion date at August 2031. As a reminder, Damascus High School is over 75 years old and will be over 80 years old before the new school is scheduled to be complete. This project cannot be delayed any further. The major capital project budget was previously approved by the County Council in fiscal year 24, but delayed to fiscal year 29. Damascus has been waiting for this project to be shovel-ready after years of ups and downs and delays. Now is the time to follow through and make sure this school gets built. The many evolving initiatives at MCPS also make completing this school on time a priority. The new boundary study takes effect and is projected to add 700 students to Damascus High School starting in 2027. It is imperative that the CIP budget be approved with the Damascus High School project in order to accommodate the additional students. MCPS cannot afford to delay the Damascus project any longer, not only to accommodate the new boundary changes, but also to ensure Damascus students have a, has a facility that can provide them the educational spaces they deserve. We look forward to further conversations and community engagement sessions regarding the construction plans and logistics about how MCPS plans to accommodate the impacted students. Transparent communication is key to ensure accurate information is available to the community.
Another pressing need in our cluster is a major capital project for Damascus Elementary School, which was built in 1934 and is over 90, nine-zero, years old. There have been no significant infrastructure improvements since 1979. We do appreciate the urgency announced to complete an ADA project at Damascus Elementary. Please engage with the special education teaching staff and the students who navigate the challenges of this building configuration each day. As a parent of a child in the Learning for Independence Program at Damascus Elementary, I have experienced firsthand the challenges of providing special education services in an outdated building. I would be happy to engage further to share experiences and support efforts for improvement. We have been told repeatedly that small projects have impacted the FCI numbers, which we feel do not adequately represent the reality of the school. And while it is nice to have a new roof and improved lighting in classrooms, daily barriers to toileting access and accessibility in the school still exist. Damascus Elementary has outgrown its capacity with the school having six relocatable classrooms, two of which were added this past summer. Please do not forget about the core needs of this school and future CIP recommendations. As Dr. Taylor said, buildings and systems have age limits, and Damascus Elementary was never built to last over 90 years.
Thank you.
Oh, we're not done.
Oh, you're done. Go ahead.
To close, we did want to share a few comments we have received from the Damascus community. Quote, continually punting the decision seems to only be making it more difficult and discouraging for each upcoming graduating class and families. We moved here envisioning a new building by the time our oldest started high school, and he's toured other schools down county and doesn't understand why DHS is so outdated in comparison.
Quote, there isn't inequity in the amenities and appearance of other high schools in the county. Damascus deserves an upgrade. And from a current Damascus High School student, coming from Halle Wells to Damascus High School was truly humbling.
Quote, please give Damascus the attention it deserves and build the community new, supportive, safe, and appropriate buildings to provide education to their students. The buildings are way past their expiration, systems are failing, staff are experiencing health issues, and the community is tired of being told their schools are up for a rebuild, only to be chopped off the block time and time again. I don't think we could have said it better.
The next steps to ensure approval of the CIP budget and the Damascus High School replacement project will be critical. Damascus has been through this process before, only to have the budget shifted and our project delayed. The Damascus community is committed to working with MCPS and the county to finally get this project done. Now is the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seneca Valley Cluster.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor, President Yang, and members of the board. I'm Mark Stunder, one of the Seneca Valley Cluster Coordinators. Here's the bottom line up front. Thank you, Dr. Taylor and staff, for including $14 million in the CIP MLK Middle School HVAC replacement. That's a meaningful step, but tonight I'm asking the board to turn that step into a full stride by affirming Dr. Taylor's recommendation at your November 20th CIP meeting and ensuring that when county and state funding arrives this spring, MLK's HVAC replacement stays on track to start in FY '27. You will also hear a lot about disrupted learning. I will address that in more detail near the end. To start, let's hear directly from MLK students. They prepared a short video about what HVAC failure feels like to them. Tech staff, please play the video.
The temperature here at MLK has made it difficult for our students to focus on their learning, and along with other factors, has made a few faint. Today, you'll be hearing from some students who want to share their experiences.
Yes, sometimes when the heating system is too hot, it causes the humidity to affect my breathing.
Oh, yeah, a lot of times, like whenever I'm in a classroom, sometimes it's too hot or too cold, especially in the gym.
It has. I've sometimes not been able to focus in class because it was like too hot or too cold.
Do you think MCPS should change this?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Board members.
I think you've seen enough.
We need change.
MLK needs your help.
And we know you have the power to help us all.
Thank you for your time.
We're too hot, we're freezing, please help us. These students are experiencing disrupted learning, and they're appealing to you for help. These are not isolated complaints, they're backed by hard data. Some MLK teachers have been recording classroom temperatures over the past few years. Here's some data from December 24. Tech staff, please show Slide 1. The vertical accesses temperature, the horizontal shows rooms. Orange bars are average highs above 78 degrees. Red bars show max highs. Room 101 hit 97 degrees in this time period. That's not a typo, take a look. A student can go from room 101 to the girls' locker room and experience a 30 to 40-degree temperature swing. This isn't just uncomfortable, it's survival mode. Every minute spent relocating due to temperature concerns is the disrupted learning minute. It gets worse. Tech staff, please show Slide 2. This shows the aftermath of a mechanical failure that can disrupt learning. VAV systems regulate airflow. When they fail, they can flood ceilings, collapse tiles, and throw entire HVAC zones into chaos. Coil HVAC units can flood floors. The facilities manager told me, he said, six HVAC unit burst in one day. Tech staff, you can take down Slide 2. This disruption runs deep. August 2024, HVAC belt fire. January 23, 23rd, 2025, MLK relocated to Lake Seneca due to burst boiler pipes and a chiller failure with a major fire department response. It was 13 degrees outside, a wind chill advisory was in effect, snow was on the ground, big time disrupted learning. July to August 2025, office staff were sent home to telework six times due to heat. July 2025, two earlier this month, 38 HVAC work orders were placed. All of this is why I'm introducing the Disrupted Learning Minute, the DLM. It's an easy calculation. Here's a simple example. 30 students relocated due to HVAC for 30 minutes equals 900 DLMs. I shared this concept with Dr. with Dr. Taylor, Ms. Swiatoka, and each board member. I believe a teacher or secretary could log DLMs via an app linked to Assets Essential work orders. It's doable, and I believe Assets Essential would want to partner with MCPS. Why do DLMs matter? The FCI is engineering-based, it does not capture what you just saw and heard. DLMs reflect real-world student and staff HVAC experiences. DLMs can strengthen future CIP discussions and funding requests. Imagine pairing DLMs with FCI data when approaching the state and the county. In closing, I'm grateful for the $14 million CIP inclusion. My ask of the board is the following. One, affirm MLK HVAC replacement in the CIP at your November 20th meeting. Two, keep the funding in place during the final CIP discussions this spring. Don't delay, start the work in fiscal '27. Three, strongly consider implementing the DLM to ensure student learning is never left out of the HVAC conversation. Why? Because every learning minute matters. Every MLK student and every MCPS student deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to call the next clusters to come forward. Northwest, Clarksburg, Poolsville, and the rest are videos, testimony. And staff, before we begin these, last year, doing our facility and CIP hearing sessions, staff were keeping a note of some projects that's not major projects, but things that need to be fixed, like both Mr. Bassi and Mr. Jerris has some things like walkie-talkie, front office. Can we keep a log of those? And I would like to have a follow-up on those items. Okay, thank you. All right, next set of parents. Okay, let's go to the Northwest, please.
Good evening to the Board of Education and Dr. Taylor. I am Dr. Christina Jr. This is my first time testifying, probably won't be my last, so just remember the glasses.
Okay. All right, you got it. Ms. Junior.
I am a mother of two young scholars being educated in MCPS, a seventh grader at Rocky Hill Middle School in Clarksburg, and a fourth grader attending the CES at Fox Chapel Elementary School in Germantown. I'm heavily invested in the success of MCPS as a parent stakeholder. However, today I'm acting in my role as one of the MCCPTA Northwest High School Cluster Coordinators, along with Ms. Corinne Carlton and Mr. Michael Lacy. We collectively represent the interest of the stakeholders of the Northwest High School Cluster, which works diligently along with our sister clusters to serve the young scholars and families of Montgomery County. We often speak about supporting the whole child. Ensuring that a child can walk from a parking lot area to the front door without stepping into traffic is one of the most basic ways we live that value. It is important for us to make informed, proactive decisions that aid in mitigating any potential safety risks to students, staff, and community members. It's with this goal in mind that we ask you to consider our very simple capital improvement plan request, the installation of a sidewalk addition at Darnstown Elementary School. Currently, all guests, staff, and students without back, oh, without backdoor passes and outside of call pool hours must walk through the school's driveway to reach the front entrance. This poses significant safety risks, especially for the elderly visitors, families with strollers, and our students due to blind turns and narrow lanes. A properly-aligned sidewalk would eliminate these risks by separating foot traffic from vehicular paths. This is what we would consider low-hanging fruit and would provide much-needed safety and security with minimal effort and cost, with maximum benefit to the Darnstown Elementary School community. This is a small, low-cost solution with no structural changes and clear alignment to MCPS's Safe Routes to School goals. It's a straightforward, high-impact safety fix, a safe path for children instead of a traffic lane. Safety is a priority for MCPS. This request is in alignment with that priority and should be considered for approval. Our students deserve a safe walk to the front door. We are simply asking you to help make that promise real. I thank you for your time and attention, and I yield the floor.
Thank you. Clarksburg.
Good evening, Board of Education members, MCPS and community members. I am Dr. Arthi Varanasi, one of three Clarksburg Cluster Coordinators, in collaboration with Audra Dove and Nadia Siamalina. I am here to testify on behalf of our cluster schools. We appreciate Dr. Taylor's bold initiatives and all the hard work of his staff. That said, we bring to your attention several observations that should not be overlooked. The recent boundary options for Region 6 move 700 students out of Clarksburg High School and sends them to Damascus, which won't have the capacity to hold them until 2031. Each option brings hundreds of students from Germantown into Clarksburg, transforms current walking schools into schools that bus a large percentage of students, and leaves the unbalanced demographics and low farms rates unchanged at Poolsville. While we respect MCPS's need to maximize facility utilization, these boundaries don't seem to adhere to policy FAA, which requires MCPS to use student demographics, geography, school assignment stability, and facility utilization as its priority considerations when determining boundaries. Instead, the boundaries appear to prioritize regional program seat availability. Not only are low farms rates and limited demographic diversity unchanged for some schools in the Crown Boundary Study, there are some regions that rely on one or two schools to house the majority of the most coveted programs. The answer to equity and opportunity is not merely about access. After all, students around the county have access to Algebra I, but over 70% aren't proficient. Students have access to biology, but just 54% are proficient. Students have access to English, yet only 47% of 10th grade farm students are proficient. Students around the county aren't getting their fundamental academic, academic needs met. Teachers want, need, and deserve more classroom support as well. Yet it seems that BOE believes that the launch of 36 parallel programs in which less than 20% of high schoolers will participate is an equity priority. Meantime, there's a five-alarm fire burning in our core academic student outcomes. Perhaps that should be a top priority. After all, the overwhelming majority of students will remain in their local schools. They deserve better. We are ecstatic to see Damascus High School back on the CIP and implore the BOE to ensure the school replacement is completed by August 2031. We insist that Clarksburg boundaries and school assignments not be changed until Damascus is completed. We ask that communities, including staff, be given robust engagement and collaboration opportunities in forthcoming discussions about elementary and boundary, secondary boundary studies, Crown Holding School possibilities, and regional programs. Webinars serve a purpose in sharing information, but they aren't collaborative. Authentic community engagement must happen in all regions by meeting our communities where they are, listening to their voices, their concerns, and their ideas. This is the only path forward, which means we may have to go slow at times to go fast. We applaud the engagement sessions that were announced today. However, our community noted that Region 6 is not included on the list. Once again, we are left out of the conversation without no explanation. We recognize facilities needs in our county are many, and we support MCPS's goal to begin the long, hard road towards maintenance equilibrium. We bring to your attention the following needs in the Clarksburg Cluster. Rocky Hill Middle School's gym floor, jagged metal bleachers, and lighting need to be replaced. The gym and kitchen at Halle Wells lack HVAC, which continues to limit facility use. Snowdome Farms exposed loading dock needs a security gate. Students at Clarksburg Elementary navigate holes and deep fissures in their blacktop during recess to avoid injury. They need a blacktop resurface. And then, there's And then, there's Clarksburg High School. They have 13 open work orders, but will share the impacts of one. Two weeks ago, there was a medical emergency in one of the portable classrooms, but the teacher couldn't rely on the call button to reach the main office because it does not work. In fact, for over a year, several Clarksburg portables continue to have non-functioning call buttons and speakers despite continued requests to have them fixed or replaced. Now imagine if there were an active shooter, no call buttons, no speakers. These safety issues must be mitigated now, waiting is not an option. In conclusion, we ask MCPS to take bold action by pausing, engaging, and listening to our communities. Prioritize a must-have now, like the Damascus rebuild, and create an equitable educational experience for all MCPS students that begins with high-quality, core foundational curriculum across all our local schools, increased student and teacher support, and safe schools that are welcoming and properly maintained. We ask the BOE to fully support Dr. Taylor's CIP request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Poolsville Cluster.
Hi, I'm Sueann Roberts, Poolsville Cluster Coordinator. My three points this morning, sorry, this evening will flow in the order of easiest to fix to a bigger underlying issue. But first, I'd like to thank all who advocated over the many, many, many years for new construction and upgrades now, fingers crossed, nearing completion at Poolsville High School, as well as the board for their SIP budget approvals that allowed this significant project to move forward. Onto the points. I bring three areas of consideration to your attention. The first concerns repair of the tennis courts at John Poole Middle School. Tennis courts versus HVAC systems and student security, I recognize where this might fall as a priority in people's minds if looked at as standalone item. However, I'd like to point out that this need did not have the opportunity to be included in prior fiscal year's SIP, since it is perhaps an impossible task to impose on any human to predict with 100% accuracy the timeline and impact of elements outside of anyone's control, like unanticipated significant material costs increasing coming out of a global pandemic, resulting unanticipated extended and ongoing shared facilities use due to project delays, and weather. As we look at the direct sacrifices our students and staff cluster-wide have made during PHS construction, we must thank our local community for cooperative problem-solving towards equitable access to programs, both academic and extracurricular. But as special as our community can be, there are limits to what Poolsville can do without equitable support from MCPS. Prime example, John Poole Middle School will again support Poolsville High School athletics this spring. I've included a sampling of photos taken this morning from JPMS's tennis courts in my written testimony. They show cracks and holes, cracks that run along the entirety of most net lines, as well as holes and cracks found on all courts at JPMS. Now, I am not a sports ball person myself, so I can't claim to know much about tennis, but even I know that straight nets and flat surfaces where balls won't bounce weird are an imperative part of fair play in this sport. We respectfully request timely attention be given to repairs to JPMS's tennis courts as we rapidly approach colder and potentially wetter weather ahead of the spring athletics season. The second area for your attention concerns information I learned about Poolsville High School's turf during a presentation earlier this week. I echo the comments provided this evening by Poolsville Town Commissioner Alan Hobbs detailing the benefits of artificial turf, including sustainability, and Link Hoing's comments noting unique challenges Poolsville faces due to our rural location. In addition to those comments, an MCPS presentation Q&amp;A this week highlighted that PHS is indeed special. Unfortunately, we're special around issues of drainage and stormwater management. This unique to Poolsville issue commands a different approach to turf installation than what is more typical across other parts of the county. This relatively recent discovery adds to delays of completion of the overall PHS project as well as incremental cost. We respectfully request support of installation of artificial turf, including the incremental costs related to Poolsville High School's uniquely soggy turf install issue, to help bring this whole PHS project even closer to full completion. Lastly, I bring to your attention the updated FCI assessment. As of this morning, MCPS's facility condition assessments and understanding the Facility Condition Index webpage excludes Poolsville Elementary School. It got me wondering why. What factors go into FCI that influence inclusion or exclusion, facility assessment, and planning decisions, and why? While acknowledging the sprinkling of additions in 2013 and some maintenance conducted this past summer, I note that PES was originally constructed in 1960, and its partial modernization date is listed as 1978. Though not many, a few schools included in the updated FCI assessment list have modernization dates listed up to 10 years after 1978. While most parents might not be pining for state-rated core space and classroom square footage specifications, FCI allows us stakeholders to understand the ability of our schools to support all students through our school's ability to support specialized education programs and the delivery of program and individualized support services. Confidence in a school's ability for students to be supported in their specialized education needs at a program and individualized level are arguably factors parents do consider when making school enrollment decisions. Not only do I respectfully seek more explicit explanation around FCI data collection and assessment processes, I believe MCPS stakeholders deserve transparency around underlying data used by MCPS in its decision-making.
Thank you. Thank you. MCPSTV, please play Winston Churchill, Richard Montgomery, and Rauveo Cluster testimonies.
Good evening, President Yang, Superintendent Taylor, members of the Board of Education. My name is Susan Lifce, and I'm the Winston Churchill Cluster Coordinator. Thank you for this opportunity to testify regarding the FY27 capital budget and the FY27 to '32 CIP and the needs of the Churchill Cluster. Please refer to my written testimony for my full comments and CIP requests. Thank you for your efforts to write the MCPS ship. We appreciate this as a monumental task and the proactive measures you're taking to address the problems that should have been handled a long time ago. The CIP requests I discuss tonight are many of the same requests I made three years ago. I'm hopeful that these requests will be addressed, given MCPS's priorities and new approach to the CIP. While some CIP requests are large-ticket items like a roof, many are not. The majority of the requests address ADA compliance and school safety, high priorities for both MCPS and our community. Half of our cluster schools have been waiting for years for security entrance systems to provide staff and students efficient access to the school buildings without having to circumvent the building perimeter. These systems play a critical role during reverse evacuations or when students, especially in elementary school or with special needs, have to quickly access the restrooms. Hoover has been waiting for over five years for outdated and broken security cameras to be replaced. Churchill needs exterior door alarms and safety lights to illuminate dark areas of the parking lot for safety and security. Seven Locks needs new walkie-talkies to communicate during emergencies. For years, Beverly Farms has needed the replacement of a deteriorating playground wall that is a safety hazard to the students and staff. Several schools need installations or upgrades to become ADA compliant or to support their special needs population. Churchill needs continued support to become ADA compliant, especially in bathrooms, an upgraded elevator, sidewalk improvement, and school pathways. Wayside needs support for its SCB and PEP students with the installation of an additional bathroom and installation of a stable surface in the playground for ADA accessibility. Bell's Mill, Potomac, and Wayside quest the mulch in their playground be replaced with a stable material to prevent injuries and students in special education from ingesting the mulch. Potomac needs the build-out of shell classrooms that are already fitted with HVAC and electric. The school has been forced to use non-instructional space, even though it has not exceeded enrollment capacity, in order to accommodate classes that support the new state literacy requirements. Several building systems at Cabin John need elevated attention. The roof, which has not reached the end of its life cycle, has been leaking and causing water damage since its installation several years ago. The continued water intrusion threatens the overall structural integrity of the building and promotes mold growth. Since the roof isn't old, the warranty may help to correct the problem. We request swift action to verify the warranty's validity and coverage scope so the roof repair or replacement can be completed, either under the warranty or otherwise scheduled in the CIP. In addition, the structural integrity of Cabin John's retaining wall adjacent to the basketball courts has also been compromised. The basketball courts deemed a safety hazard have been closed since the first day of school. We request an expedited assessment to determine whether a repair or replacement of the wall is needed. Cabin John also needs an evaluation for partial HVAC replacement in various areas of the school after numerous unsuccessful repairs. The issues with the roof, retaining wall, and HVAC have caused significant disruptions in instructional and recreational time and need to be remedied soon. The Churchill Cluster requests that Churchill projects currently scheduled in the FY27 capital budget or in the FY27 '32 CIP remain on schedule or are completed earlier when possible. Currently, our cluster is in a tornado of Crown Boundary Study information. The second set of recommended options paint a very different picture than the first set of options and cause confusion, frustration, and anxiety in the community. We request MCPS dig deeper into the data and incorporate information from survey responses to demonstrate its fidelity to policy FAA and the factors under consideration when making these changes. MCPS must be transparent and forthcoming regarding the effects of designating Crown High School as a holding school and adding an elementary school boundary study will have on the Crown Boundary Study and its timeline. The community also needs more information regarding the secondary programs analysis and how it will incorporate the boundary study options. Effective two-way engagement means of providing community needs with meaningful information to give substantive feedback. Thank you again for this opportunity to testify.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor and the Board of Education. My name is Jennifer Hardisty, and I am one of the Richard Montgomery Cluster Coordinators, speaking on behalf of the seven schools in the ARM cluster. First, we are disappointed that a decision was made to reallocate funding from a major capital project for Trinbrook Elementary School to other schools with much lower farms and EML rates. We understand the need to prioritize schools. However, Trinbrook has been put off for a major capital project again and again since at least 2000. Each time it is considered, the criteria for funding major capital projects changes, and the Trinbrook community is told it no longer qualifies for attention. This gives a message to the community that Trinbrook is not as important as other schools. The school has had several improvements over the years, but multiple major concerns remain. The school is not ADA compliant and is in need of an elevator, handicap parking, and ramps inside and outside. Many of the doorways are too narrow to accommodate a wheelchair. These fixes require renovation or replacement to school. Also, the school lacks a complete sprinkler system. The plumbing and electrical systems are at end of life, and the building layout raises security concerns. The school was constructed throughout the 1950s, and its single revitalization was in 1986. MCPS can continue to spend money on improvements, but the school is over 70 years old. By MCPS's own recently announced criteria, Trinbrook is due for a full replacement. We ask the BOE to consider the cost-effectiveness of continuing to spend money on improvements given a school's age as compared to funding a major capital project sooner rather than later. It seems as if all the repairs are just postponing the inevitable, which is a replacement school. As a community school and Title I school, Trinbrook would benefit greatly from having access to services from the Linkages to Learning program. The community school liaison is not able to meet all of the needs of the school and community. The staff has found the school supports through various agencies and services, but this mishmash of part-time temporary providers lacks continuity of care and is not enough to ensure that everyone at Trinbrook thrives. When Montgomery County and MCPS demand that a school have a major capital project as a prerequisite to receiving Linkages to Learning, and then repeatedly deny major capital projects at schools where these services are desperately needed, our children who are already dealing with trauma are harmed again and left behind. Elsewhere in our cluster, Bayard Western Elementary School and College Gardens Elementary School each have a critical need for replacement of the school's HVAC system. Mayor Bayard Ruston's rooftop HVAC units are not functioning properly and need to be fully replaced. The lack of heat and air conditioning has made teaching and learning a challenge. We urge MCPS to replace these systems immediately. There are also some security concerns. Bell Elementary School has been requesting to replace its classroom door locking mechanism since at least 2022. Currently, teachers must step outside the classroom to lock their doors instead of doing so from the inside to ensure the safety of students and staff in the event of an active shooter or lockdown. Another security concern is the need for additional cameras at Richie Park Elementary School and Bayard Western Elementary School to cover blind spots. Several issues at Richard Montgomery High School need to be addressed. The baskets in the gym are at the end of life, and the basket key panels need to be replaced with a switch panel or button to eliminate the need to raise or lower the baskets one by one, which takes 20 minutes. Also, the lighting in the gym needs to be replaced with LED lighting. A permanent ceiling projector needs to be installed in an auditorium accessible from the sound booth to provide an in-house connection for plugging and streaming presentations. Currently, the staff uses a projector on a cart which obstructs the view of the audience in the first five rows and which cannot project to the full screen. Also, the PA system at the stadium overheats. Richard Montgomery is a top-ranked school, and it's an embarrassment that these repairs have not been completed. ARM also needs carpet replacement in media center and main office because of the stain bubbling up due to multiple HVAC leaks. The carpet in Richie Park Elementary School's conference room is also ripped and torn and needs to be replaced. At Bell Elementary School, the water lines in the main office have been leaking for years, and the situation worsens when the air conditioning unit is running. An evaluation of the aging water pipes is needed, and there may be a need to replace the office's air conditioner. The elevator at Bell also needs frequent repairs as often out of service. Bell has a current student who needs access to the elevator. Also, the heating and cooling are inconsistent in the wing of the school containing 200 narrowed classrooms. Julian's West Middle School needs its parking lot space lines and yellow caution blocks to be repainted. The school's older water fountain stations do not always function and need to be replaced with touchless refillable water stations. Electrical touchless hand dryers need to be installed in all remaining bathrooms. We urge the Board of Education and you to seek the revenues to fund the projects that each school needs and to get the repairs done in order to provide a world-class learning environment. Thank you for your consideration.
Dear President Yang and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony on behalf of the Rockville Cluster. We appreciate your ongoing commitment to the safety and well-being of all students and staff in MCPS, and would like to highlight two pressing issues affecting our cluster. First is the urgent need for safer routes to school, and second is the need for reliable cellular service within our school buildings, especially during emergencies. Recently, our community experienced a truly tragic loss that serves as a heartbreaking reminder of the dangers faced by students who walk or bike to school every day. While we acknowledge that pedestrian safety is a shared responsibility across multiple agencies, the school system has a critical role to play. Over the years, families across the Rockville Cluster have raised repeated concerns about pedestrian safety in our community. While we appreciate the traffic safety improvements that have been implemented in some areas, the measures taken along Bauer Drive have not gone far enough to ensure the safety of the many young students who regularly walk or bike this route to and from Earlby Wood Middle School every day. Instances of speeding and aggressive driving along Bauer Drive are frequent and well-documented. Meanwhile, young students by their very nature may behave unpredictably, making them especially vulnerable in these conditions. Our community is particularly concerned about the danger posed by the intersections at Bauer Drive and Russet Road and Bauer Drive and Greenspan Lane, where students routinely cross a heavily trafficked street without the protection of stop signs, signals, or crossing guards. We ask MCPS to proactively collaborate with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, law enforcement, and school-based teams to conduct comprehensive safety audits around all cluster schools, particularly at high-risk intersections and along heavily utilized routes to school. We also urge MCPS and county agencies to provide traffic calming measures near our schools and upgrade signage, such as installing passive or user-activated flashing beacons at heavily trafficked crosswalks to enhance visibility and improve pedestrian safety. Our students should never have to risk their lives just to get an education. The second issue we bring before you is less visible but potentially just as dangerous: inadequate cellular coverage inside our school buildings. In recent lockdowns and emergency situations, school administrators and staff in the Rockville Cluster have found themselves without the ability to call or text due to poor cell reception within certain areas of their schools. This is not only frustrating, it's dangerous. Emergencies do not occur on a schedule, nor do they happen conveniently near the main office. Administrators must be able to reach first responders, MCPS security, and each other from anywhere in the building, whether they're in a gym, a classroom, a stairwell, or a basement. We respectfully request that MCPS assess all schools in the Rockville Cluster for cell signal strength, develop and fund a plan to improve cell service in buildings where signal is insufficient, and establish a timeline where signal is insufficient, and establish a timeline and accountability framework to ensure staff can rely on consistent communication tools during lockdowns and emergencies. This is not a luxury, it's a basic safety requirement. The issues we've raised tonight of safe routes to school and reliable communication are both matters of student and staff's safety. Addressing them requires collaboration, urgency, and transparency. Our families deserve to know that every possible step is being taken to prevent future tragedies and ensure schools are safe inside and out. We thank you for your attention to these concerns and for your continued service to our students and families. The Rockville Cluster stands ready to work with you and advocate for solutions. Respectfully, Rachel Schiffenbauer, Rockville Cluster Coordinator for MCCPTI.
Thank you for, oh, all the cluster coordinator for your testimony. I'm going to ask my colleagues to see they have questions and comment. I'm going to start from this side. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you, and thank you all for your testimony on this matter. I was wondering if administration could share a little bit more if we're planning to add more students to Damascus and we're also planning to renovate the school. Can you share more about the plans for that, what that might look like, what students might expect to see?
Sure, I'll let Ms. Swiatoka fill in some of the blanks if I miss anything. The Damascus property does, it's unique in some regards because it is big enough that we could build on-site. It's possible. Is it optimal? No. Having a holding school would be much more optimal, and one of the topics that we certainly have discussed and may appear before the board as an action item is to potentially amend the scope of the Crown Boundary Study to allow for the possibility, or at least allow an option, for the community to review and for the board to consider that would have Crown as a holding school temporarily. It would absolutely be our intention to make that a comprehensive high school at some point, but certainly for some of the projects that we've talked about in our CIP proposal and that the community is certainly concerned about, to queue those up in that holding facility of Crown. If the board adjusts its boundaries and expands the Damascus Boundary and there was a holding school option like Crown, it would be able to hold that capacity.
And without Crown, it won't.
And without Crown, it would not. So, that certainly is part of the factor of your conversation and certainly something that you need to consider because temporarily you would have some imbalance that you'd have to mitigate and you'd have to work through. So, we look forward to bringing a bunch of options for the board's consideration, but it absolutely should be top of mind for the Damascus community. It should be top of mind for the board as well.
Thank you for that. That was very helpful.
Thank you. Ms. Sylvester.
Thank you to everyone that came to testify. Certainly, we want to fund it all. So, just as a reminder that, you know, the county council approves our CIP budget, and so we are able, we have to then make decisions based on how much funding we are appropriated. So, we hear you. We visit all these schools. We know the need. We know that it's real. And so, I just want you to remember that this process is ongoing here on the Board of Education, but then it does go to the county council, and they make the decisions, and then we have to decide what to do with the money that we are given. So, just as a reminder of that, and thank you so much for your advocacy here tonight.
Thank you for that comment. Every year, we recommend projects, so when the funding is finally allocated, we have to do the painful process of non-recommended cuts, and that is the part that is very difficult. And so, the funding is a crucial piece. Ms. Rivera-Offen.
Excuse me. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all our cluster representatives for advocating so passionately. I'm one of those board members who constantly visits her schools and her cluster. I hear you. I'm MLK. I have been there when it has not been so pleasant. So, I would just want to say to Mark, I would like to suggest that Dr. Taylor takes him on the road with him when he's explaining all about the HVAC. I think you guys will make a great duo.
The learning loss minutes.
Because honestly, it is so transparent, and you really, I mean, and that video from the kiddos that MLK truly represents a sentiment, right? It's one thing to hear about things, it's another thing to live it, it's another thing to hear from the people who are directly affected by. So, kudos to Mark. And I think we did ask in the past, at least I know I did and others, about the direct impact that interrupted education has because not just HVAC, but it could be bursting pipes, it could be leaks, and so other things. And I think our staff, if I'm not mistaken, is gathering that information.
All right, I will just say I do commend Mark for what he has shared. If anyone has not read his concept paper yet, I think it's a perfect example of someone bringing us a proposal, an idea that he brought on one of the webinars earlier this summer, and then actually put it down on paper and gave a suggestion. So, you know, we have not moved forward with specifically implementing that, but it is a great idea and a concept that we'd like to consider and figure out how it might be something that we could implement moving forward.
Thank you. I am a little bit concerned about Clasfer High School about the portable's call button is not working. Can you?
We will take a look at that. That's an immediate maintenance concern.
It seems like it should be an easy fix. It's something that is very essential to do, that is one of those things. So, the other thing that I heard a lot, and I know that Damascus Elementary is going to actually be getting a whole ADA facelift, in a sense, which has been needed for a long time, but I heard a lot about ADA, and I hope staff was taking notes. When we are assessing our schools, it would be, I guess, my wish that as we're assessing all these other things, that we're also assessing, especially in those schools that are so old, that we're assessing ADA compliance. I think that is vital, especially for our kids, for parents and others who might have access, especially in areas where there are the bathroom or parking, anything to make it easier. I heard about the crosswalk that Ms. Christina Jr. brought to our attention. I don't know if that's actually something that we have to work with MC DOT to be able to make it. So, that's.
That's a cutting project.
But can we advocate for it? Because it seems like there's a Bermuda Triangle in MC DOT. To, you know, to be quite honest, as somebody who has advocated for pedestrian safety for our kids, the whole, and I have to say how incredibly sorry we have been to lose two of our students who have been killed. But as somebody who lost a student back two years ago, Elijah Miles at the crosswalk of Hysteria in Grace Seneca, that no turn or red we've been waiting for for over two years, and there still hasn't been any action. And this past weekend, we had four students that, you know, were injured and one gravely injured as pedestrians. We have an issue. We have a big issue, and it's not the pedestrians so much, but we also need to look at the drivers. Now, MCPS cannot take on everything, but it is my hope that we look at our kids as much as we advocate for them when they're in our classrooms, that we also advocate for them when they're not in our classrooms and when they're actually around our schools. And I really would like to urge all of you to please advocate for the safety of our students. We cannot lose another child in this community. And the kids who do survive, many of them with brain injuries, they have to live with those consequences. And unfortunately, in a lot of these cases, there are other young people who are at the wheel, and some of these can be preventable. So, it is my hope, as much as you come and advocate here as well, as Ms. Sylvester said, that it is all about how much funding we're going to get from our colleagues at the county council. And we wish we could do a lot more because those of us who see it directly, we know the impact that it has on the learning and the environment of our children and our teachers. So, I just want to say thank you so much for your diligence and your advocacy to make our schools a better place.
Ms. Wolf.
I too wanted to thank Mark for his idea about DLM. That was very, very interesting, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. We heard a lot of testimony about things that are immediate, things that we could do. So, I'm not going to go through the entire list because I know that you're taking notes, but I do want to just bring up a couple. The security ones are particularly bothersome, where there are cameras that are not working, the call button, and I think Ms. Rivera-Offen covered it. Walkie-talkies. I think.
And also the playground entrance.
Yeah.
That has been, you know, that has been on our list to fix for a while, really is, you know, the elementary school wall all around the buildings.
I'd like to get some sort of report about an assessment of the cameras, particularly at our elementary schools and the schools that have a lot of portables in the back, whether there are cameras back there. I just wanted to respond to the safe routes to school. You know, we are, that's constantly on our mind, particularly after we lost a child this year. So, I don't know if there's something we can do to work with the county to see if we can either get some patrol officers out or something, but people are racing up and down the streets constantly. Somebody referred to it as traffic calming. Good luck with that because it's really become a problem since COVID. And the last thing I want to refer to is the cell service at Rockville High School. Rockville isn't unique, but they need a cell tower, and I'm not sure that that is within our jurisdiction. I think that that is something that we have to go to the county for because there's no cell tower in that area, and that's why the service is so spotty over there. We hear that quite constantly from the principal in that area. Other than that, I want to thank everybody for their testimony. Thank you.
Ms. Matoy.
Thank you. Just quickly for everyone's knowledge, actually Councilmember Fanny Gonzalez is actually, would like to have information from folks about spaces where there's not great cell service. She, I think, was on her social media maybe the other day where she's asking folks to let her know if there's areas where the cell service is not great. So, she seems to be wanting to have that information. So, just so the community is aware, and we thank Councilmember Fanny Gonzalez for taking that on. I want to also join in the concern about safety mechanisms in the schools, but I want to be more specific, and I would like to know how many outstanding maintenance orders or requests we have right now for call buttons, walkie-talkies, and security cameras. I don't expect that you have that information just at the ready, but if we can see, and then also, what is, I guess, the estimated wait time on those items? Again, I know a lot of it's funding-dependent and staff, you know, do we have staff to do these things? So, I'm not, you know, putting any blame on anybody, but just so that we can know kind of the status of these types of things because I think these definitely impact the safety of our students, our educators, and our families because we're also in the buildings. I also share in the concern for our students and families having safe routes to school. And I want to thank Dr. Junior for providing this, and I wanted to ask a quick follow-up question. So, this is the area here, is that correct? And is that, is that a road or is that still school property? But it's not school property space? Okay, and so, that's what I was trying to figure out too, because we have some where then we have to figure out, is that a county road? Is it a state, you know? And unfortunately, so when my children were in elementary schools, I came in where there was already some sort of assessment initiated. And I have to tell you that it's a frustrating experience because you're there, and much like many of us have probably felt in with some of these webinars that we have, you're kind of just there and you're listening, and you see all these things, and it takes forever to get them in place. And I have to tell you that even sometimes when they're in place, I still see people zooming down the street, blowing through the crosswalks with people there, even though there are signs, and there are sometimes, we have in some areas where they have blinking stop signs, which is fantastic. I have no idea how they got those, but then in other areas, there's not even a crosswalk for the kids to walk across the street safely to get to school. And it's very clear disparities when it comes to socioeconomics and ethnicity and race. So, I just want to commend you for raising that issue and hopefully that we can collaborate. If you're interested in working on this issue further, I'm happy to engage with you so we can talk to our county partners because unfortunately, it is at the county level where we really have to do that, even including the campaigns for drivers, because I just witnessed today a woman scrolling through social media, she's driving with car seats in the back and kids in the back when I was out in the community today. So, it's incumbent on all of us to pay attention. As someone mentioned, you know, kids are going to be kids, right? So, I just appreciate that, and I would, again, if anyone in the community would like to work on safe routes to school, please just reach out to me. I would appreciate that.
Ms. Dore.
I'm going to add to the comments of my colleagues about safe routes to school because it's really a life and death issue. We have, at the county level, boards, committees, and commissions, where these boards, committees, and commissions meet quarterly. I don't see one that this issue fits neatly into. So, I would suggest that we advocate to have a board committee or commission.
Or safe routes, yeah.
For safe routes to schools where we could, all the parties then would meet quarterly, and this is how we do work at the county level on other issues that are life and death issues. So, hopefully, we can work with our partners to do that. And then I just wanted to talk about some of the maintenance issues. So, you know, we get these laundry lists during this time, although every year we have certain areas where it's really difficult to get a cluster coordinator to come in. Even when I used to do this, I used to sometimes cover two clusters because I wanted to make sure that those issues were brought up. And so, I'm, I, if we don't have a cluster here, is there any way we could reach out to principals just to see if all of those issues can be in one list?
I have actually done that. While we were sitting here at the dais, I reached out to a few, and we'll be continuing to reach out because it's important. I appreciate all of you coming, but we also know we want to make sure everyone's voice gets heard around the county. So, I've already initiated that, and I appreciate the suggestion.
So, I think it's something that we should do probably every year, just so we're being a little proactive about this. But getting back to these lists, we have put in our operating budget for this year a maintenance team that will be, correct me if I'm wrong, going out to clusters or schools and doing, to clean up some of these maintenance requests. And how is that working so far? And how would parent know if that team was coming to their school or if they could expect that to happen?
So, it says it was funded this year, and this is the first year we're in the process of staffing those teams right now.
Okay, that is good to hear because I think maybe, you know, we can use this exercise in summer comments to get those teams working on this laundry list. Thank you.
Thank you. I associate myself with the comments from my colleagues. One clarifying question. ADA compliance, ADA issues were brought up multiple times by many different clusters. Is that a factor that we weight in our facility condition index?
Not in the facility condition assessment, existing like ADA, like an elevator, the age of the system was taken into account, but not, you know, where the elevator is placed in the building doesn't meet all the ADA needs. That is a design, that is a compliance issue, that is not a system issue.
So, and that's also why, there's actually a couple of sections that we'll cover in the November 4th work session. There is a section of the Capital Improvement Program proposal that is just ADA, and there is a section that covers security. So, there are projects that kind of go along the lines in which you're talking about and that you're asking questions about that are specific to those categories.
So, then my question would be if that is. So then my question will be, if that is not included in the FCI, the Facility Condition Index, and we are prioritizing projects.
So I want to correct one thing.
Right.
So it is if the system is in place and the age of the system is depleted. So like, like what Ms. Wyatoka said.
Okay. But what about the sidewalks or the other things?
Similarly so. So if there is a sidewalk and the sidewalk is depleted, it is included as part of the FCI.
Okay.
So you, you are thinking about the, the system as a total. And the other piece that is important here and why ADA is separate is because it has a compliance component.
Right.
You, you don't have a choice to be ADA compliant or not. So getting to ADA work is a priority in the CIP every year.
So there's a separate funding for, for that category?
Not necessarily separate funding, but we separate the work so that we can draw attention to the fact that it is for ADA compliance purposes.
For example, if the auditorium is not accessible, you know, the stage is not, that we will, we will put that on the list to fix.
Yes, and, and every corner of every school needs to be looked at on a routine basis because ADA rules do change from time to time, and so they need to be updated. And in our older schools, those are the schools that are more and more out of compliance. So when, for example, the Damascus Cluster brought up their 90-year-old elementary school, you can only imagine the ADA challenges with a 90-year-old school.
Right.
And that's not the only 90-year-old school in, in discussion in our CIP plans, because unfortunately, we, we have quite a few.
Okay. Are we aware of the cabin John roof leaking issue? Can someone check on?
I'm not off the top of my head, so we will look into that.
Right, because.
We are aware of the retaining wall that was mentioned, yes.
Okay, so, so I think the, you know, we are talking about mall, we're talking about that roof is not that old, is it under warranty? Can someone please follow through on that? Thank you. We're going to go into the next.
Just very quickly, can I just say one last thing? Just for, and this is something I was going to bring up to Dr. Taylor, because we have, our Department of Transportation that, but mainly they, they do the best routing. So there's really, that's, that's our, you know, because we, we are the largest, I think, system, one of the largest in the country that cover most large area. I think we go twice around the world, something like that.
Two and a half times.
Two and a half times, okay, to be, to be exact. So one of the things that I, I really would like us to consider is having actually somebody who does the whole liaison or about, about the access and safety of walks for our children. Because I think the time has come, I don't think we cannot rely on other agencies to do that anymore, because we do have areas like in the Beers Mill area where we're missing sidewalks for our kids. We have areas, you know, Wheaton Hills community. There was an Einstein walkability apparently study that none of us knew about, even the community, which is, so my hope and my wish would be that before school starts, that we can actually have something for our principals about all the issues that happen in that community when it comes to safety, walking, riding bikes. Actually, the county, they say it keeps really good data, but it needs to be shared with the community. So the community, then the principal can tell their community, listen, we had so many incidents, maybe not deaths, but so many people got hit, so many people, bikers, you know, got injured. This might not be the best idea to, to send your kid on a bike or so on or walk to school, and advocate for some of these changes to happen. I, I appreciate what the county does, you know, with, with, you know, with the zebra and the crayons, but I think we're beyond that. I think we need a little bit more hands-on to ensuring that our kids are safe going to school, and it might take a little bit of work from our part to ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. To Ms. Wolf's point and the Rockview Cluster's point about no cell service, are all the classrooms equipped with a landline?
No, not, not every classroom has a landline.
Okay.
To fill in on the cell service issue, there's apps on computers you can use for texting. And so I just, you know, to fill in this gap in safety, I think we should look into best practices to use apps and the Wi-Fi so you can still get out to people. Anyway, that's just a suggestion. Also, I'm sorry, I realized that we didn't talk about Region 6 not having a meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, so I just wanted to add that.
It's at Queens Orchard and it's at Seneca.
There are two, I'm sorry, five names.
Turn on your mic. Turn on your mic, Dr.
So, yeah, so Kennedy is Region 3, Watkins Mill, Region 5, Blair, Region 1, Rockville and Churchill, Region 4, and Paint Branch, Region 2. So no Region 6.
Easily remedied. We can add another meeting.
Yeah, so I know it was probably oversight, but yet again, this is an example of upcoming county falling into being an oversight, and that is not acceptable.
And we appreciate you raising that. It is absolutely not acceptable, and unfortunately, things like that seem to happen time and time again, so I appreciate you being insistent on that point.
All right. Thank you. Please return to your seat. I'm going to call on the individuals to come up for their testimony. We are calling on Charlotte Cook, Kevin Sorrentino, Kristen Welsh, Melissa Porter Parks, Sue Miller, Amy Akaber Hastings.
Good evening. During the Board of Education meeting of September 4th, I spoke to you about the alternative education program, which was moved to the North Lake Holding School during the fall. I want to thank all of you for listening to my concerns and for the actions that you have taken. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We felt at the time that the placement was quite inappropriate and that these students need a permanent location. This, as you recall, was a temporary placement. The students who are enrolled in the AEP have some of the greatest needs for individualized educational services, and for the reasons which I previously stated, I feel that the North Lake School is not meeting their needs. It's a coincidence that it's on Bauer Drive. Under the FY 2027 budget that was presented last week by Superintendent Taylor, there is a proposal for a, quote, appropriation for planning funds to relocate the AEP site at North Lake to move permanently to the Spring Hill Center, unquote. Additionally, quote, "At the end of the 2627 school year, the North Lake Center students will be moved to the Fairland Center, while the Spring Mill Center will be renovated before it becomes a permanent home." If this plan is followed, a stable facility will be created for AEP, and that hopefully will meet the needs of students so that they may successfully complete their education at either their home school or the new AEP site. The new location would also hopefully make it easier for students to attend school, as the location would probably better fit those who live in the southern part of the county. Since students have been bused to the new North Lake Center, absenteeism is a significant problem. I can say this because I live next door to the school. I'm retired, and I observe poor attendance. School starts at 7:30 a.m., and yet I have seen students walking by foot as late as nine o'clock. They walk along Bauer Drive, they have to cross Norbeck Road, which is dangerous, from the stops, the school, the bus stop, and they arrive as, as late as nine o'clock. School is dismissed at 2:30 daily, and I have failed to see more than 25 students leave the school to get on buses or cars. It would appear that more than 50% of the students are not attending, and from what I have seen, the, the attendance is not getting any better. Did I get three minutes?
Yeah, only three minutes.
I'm sorry. I have a lot more to say, and I'd love to talk to you about it, but thank you for making steps.
But we have your testimony.
To take care of the students in the AEP program. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming in. Kevin Sorrentino.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kevin Sorrentino. I'm a parent of former Twinbrook students. I'm a PTA member and a volunteer. I've had children at Twinbrook from 2012 until 2024. That's 12 years running. When the school bell rings at that school, I hear it at my house. I was here in 2024, and I asked a board member to join the Twinbrook community and see the value and the need of investing in our school. The result was a feasibility study that happened in our community. The community is excited to select option four to rebuild our school. A lot of things happened since then. I'm going to move on to one more because I'm going to run out of time. We have challenges just like everyone else, and there's plenty of people here that'll explain those challenges, and there's a big, long list that I'm sure you'll see, just like everyone else. Two portable water locations. There are only two places the kids in a school of 600 students can get water at Twinbrook right now, but we don't let that stop us. There are classrooms on the lower level that are only accessible by stairs. I personally experienced this when I went there with, to see a third grade teacher. I had, came with my infant in a stroller, couldn't get down there with the stroller. But we don't let that stop us. The Twinbrook, we roar. The Twinbrook Roar rules have been a staple for Twinbrook for many years. My kids still remember respectful, organized, always safe, and responsible. We build community at Twinbrook. Currently, Twinbrook is where every story matters, but it's really hard to make everyone feel welcome when the school is in the state that it's in. The boiler room flooded with a sewage backup. There is human waste in that boiler room. There were items stored in that area that had to be trashed and needed to be replaced, include PTA materials, student-created drawings, banners, and other material. We want to learn. During the pandemic, this, the bookmobile was a huge success. This hard work plus the connection that it created yielded results. We find a way. Currently, the school staff creates this piecemeal effort to get therapists, family count, care managers into the building, but it's only one or two days a week, and it's at capacity. Today, there is no family engagement specialist at Twinbrook, formerly called a PTW. The staff member who was there was very popular, but he's been reassigned to Julius West and to Richard Montgomery. Twinbrook staff is ready to work with the board to get linkages to learning in our building, but it's currently restricted to buildings that have been revitalized or rebuilt. It's really hard to get that in the current state that we're in. I'm going to fast forward all the way to the end. What do we want from the Board of Education? We want option four from the feasibility study. We want a new school for Twinbrook Elementary. What's in the current CIP? I call option zero, nothing, for again, for the longest time. So what do we want? We want option five. We would like you guys to invest in our community. Let us have linkages to learning. Suspend that requirement and get it in there, and then put Twinbrook 2.0 on your ladder. It has to be done, but we realize maybe we gotta wait. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kristen Welsh.
Hi, good, good evening. My name is Kristen Walsh, and I'm the full-time school counselor at Twinbrook Elementary. I'm here to advocate for the health, safety, and well-being of our students, families, and staff members. The building conditions at Twinbrook pose long-term harmful effects to our community. During the month of September, we experienced three significant building service concerns: a flood in the boiler room, sparks flying out of an electrical outlet in a first-grade girl's bathroom, and the most concerning, an outlet fire in a fifth-grade classroom that was extinguished by a student pouring water on it. Twinbrook has zero firewalls, which is a fire code violation. Twinbrook also was one of 10 schools in the county that is not considered fully sprinkled, and we must do more fire drills than any other schools in the county. This coupled with electrical outlets that were put in sometime between 1953 and 1971 is a massive safety issue. Documented and longstanding concerns with asbestos and mold inside are still a concern today. Electrical outlets are original to the building as well as the plumbing system. The plumbing is beyond the end of service, and the pipes rattle constantly. When the building has plumbing issues, this results in bathroom closures for staff and students. Twinbrook is not ADA compliant in any way, shape, or form. This limits the safety and accessibility for students and families with disabilities. Many of these health and safety concerns have existed for decades, resulting in Twinbrook being added to the SIP discussion and to be removed on multiple occasions. These concerns do not meet the criteria for renovation or new construction. I can only imagine that schools that do deem that attention, what those conditions really look like. The recent feasibility study indicated the specs for linkages to learning. DHHS, City of Rockville, and MCPS have all acknowledged the need or the benefit to linkages to our community. The caveat is that it requires a new build for it to have its own wing. Therefore, the programming, which is vital to our students and to our families, is out of reach again because there will be no new renovation or construction for Twinbrook. Smaller repairs done have skewed the building score, resulting in Twinbrook's removal from the CIP. This seemingly eliminates the possibility for us to be able to support mental health and well-being of our families in the way that it is necessary. This cycle continues to occur, and the Twinbrook community pays the price. Many of our families are multi-generation attendees at Twinbrook. So many of our families intentionally choose to remain or to return to the neighborhood so that they can experience the neighborhood and share the school experience that they attended with their own children. Our community deserves safe conditions and a safe school that they can be proud of. Thank you for your time and consideration, and go Tigers.
Thank you. Melissa Porter Parks.
As a Twinbrook parent, I was disheartened to hear that our school's capital improvements would be delayed yet again. As an educator, in fact, last year's MCPS Teacher of the Year, I am well aware of the needs that our students have. Twinbrook is a Title I school. 40% of the students at Twinbrook are multilingual learners, something I know well, because that's what I teach. We have a farms rate of over 70%. Goal three of the MCPS strategic plan reinforces the need for linkages to learning. Our neediest elementary schools, schools like Twinbrook, need these wraparound services. As an educator who works at a school with a robust wellness center, I see exactly how important those wraparound services are every single day. I have students who would not be able to come to school, would not be able to afford to feed themselves and sometimes their children without those wraparound services. Wraparound services like linkages create an equal playing field. To reiterate, MCPS's own strategic goal number three highlights our commitment to support our children holistically. By embedding linkages into our school community, we can ensure that we are investing in our students' mental, physical, and emotional health, as well as educational advocacy and family support. Our students deserve services that can break down all of the barriers that they are seeing right now. To truly embody Dr. Taylor's all mean all, all means all, I implore you to reconsider option number five. We need to suspend the requirement that schools need to be revitalized to qualify for linkages at the very, very least. We cannot continue to fail our neediest students. Reconsidering this does not cost anything. So while I agree that there are many ADA issues, there are many safety issues, there is zero reason why additional family supports cannot exist at Twinbrook right now. I'm going to yield because they talked about the ADA stuff, and I'm not going to repeat it.
Thank you. Okay, so next one, Sue Miller.
I'm Sue Miller, former Piney Branch Elementary PTA president. Our community is very grateful that our school is listed for a rebuild, but I'm here tonight to explain why our community pool is an essential part of that project. In 1969, our city signed an agreement with the county, giving the land needed for a school. school on the condition that you build, quote, "facilities for recreation, social services, health programs, and community use." The agreement notes the density of affordable housing on this site. So you built dental and health clinics inside the school, but they're long gone. Only the pool remains. A second agreement in 1970 set county responsibility for the new pool. Then, in 2009, Adventist Community Services agreed to manage the pool. So in this collaboration, the city provided the land, MCPS built the pool and school, County Rec covers the maintenance, and a nonprofit runs the pool. County Rec funded major renovation of the pool just three years ago. So rightfully, if MCPS has to bulldoze this pool, they should rebuild it. But why is this a racial equity issue? After Brown versus Board of Education mandated desegregation in 1954, white people abandoned public pools. 125 local pools shut down, and by 1959, private, members-only swim clubs had formed in our county. Those private clubs persist, and they remain mostly white. The effect of this segregation persists. Black children drown at much higher rates than white children. As late as 1971, the Supreme Court ruled that you could drain public swimming pools rather than integrate them. But in that same year, this county took a stand for integration when they opened Piney Branch Public Pool, because swim lessons save lives. And for years, all MCPS fourth graders had a swim unit in PE. Down-county students were bussed to Piney Branch Pool for these classes. Today, all DC public school third graders get swim classes, but not here. Right now, two free camps for underserved kids use Piney Branch Pool daily in the summer. But the Silver Spring Aquatic Center has already told us they do not accommodate camps. So if our pool closes, those camps won't have swimming. In short, for MCPS to bulldoze our public pool and not rebuild it would be an injustice. Instead, please, together, let's preserve this historic legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Akerberg Hastings.
Good evening, President Yang and the Board of Education, Dr. Taylor and MCPS staff. My name is Amy Akerberg Hastings. I serve MCCPTA as the Central Area Vice President for the Churchill, Richard Montgomery, Poolsville, Rockville, and Wooton clusters, and I am the parent of a Richard Montgomery senior. There have been so many pivots in the past two weeks that I feel like I live in one of those airplanes used to train astronauts for weightlessness. Bridget stole my great illustration. But as MCPS considers a dizzying array of options and complexities, all five of our clusters ask BOE to ensure that every action taken is consistent with MCPS's written policies. You've heard that already tonight. Tonight, I thought I'd be here asking for construction planning funds for Twinbrook Elementary School. So MCPS's new practice of calling schools either in or out for major capital projects is the first pivot. We've tag teamed on this school's many physical failures, and I've got details in my written testimony. The one I will mention here is that there are two filtered water bottle stations that provide the only sources of drinking water for 500 students and staff at Twinbrook. The water is not safe to drink from any other water fountain or faucet in the building. I don't expect Twinbrook to be restored to the CIP, but I do want to contest the criteria ranking prioritization. According to the criteria, Twinbrook is 21st among elementary schools in depreciated value, 13th in farms rate, and 23rd in age since last renovation. But somehow, this school is 34th in line for elementary schools and 46th overall. This, I've been ticked off for several days, and I'm having trouble testifying. There is something wrong with the arithmetic of the formula. To touch on other pivots, an elementary school boundary study should be done ASAP to resolve island assignments and minimize split articulations. It would help to resolve Twinbrook's flat enrollment numbers as well. It was great to see Cold Spring Elementary School on the list of recommended major capital projects. Because the Wooton cluster has low utilization rates and a couple of small elementary school buildings, Cold Spring's selection evokes the pivot of rightsizing elementary facilities and enrollments. MCPS must provide robust, authentic, full-fledged community engagement before making decisions about the futures of schools. The pivot of delaying the opening of Crown High School for use as a holding school is great news for the long overdue renovation of Wooton High School. But if prioritizing Wooton, Damascus, and McGruder is going to delay elementary school projects, then again, MCPS must be honest and plain-spoken about its plans. Finally, as a longstanding concern rather than a pivot, we need to hear more about how procurement practices are being improved. I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to call the next set of six to come to the front. Gu Young, Anne Marie Luciano, Megan Di Nicola, Alexander Sarav, Rosary Tucci. And one more, Christine, I'm sure I'm not saying it, Reclitis? Am I saying it? Reclitis, sorry about that. Gu Young, please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Gu Justin Young. I'm a lifelong Montgomery County resident and a proud father to two amazing kids, Mackenzie in fifth grade and Gideon in second grade at DuFif Elementary. My wife and I both came through MCPS. The education I received prepared me for a lifelong success. Today, my kids are thriving at DuFif. They're challenged academically, encouraged to chase dreams, and most of all, they're happy. Mackenzie recently joined Wooton's Wizard of Oz play with kids from Stone Mill, Travilla, and Falls Mead. She's excited to go to middle school with these new friends next year. Outside the classroom, our kids are avid swimmers with Wesley, like many Frost-Wooton families, celebrating 50 years alongside DuFif's founding. These friendships run deep, and we hope they continue through high school and beyond. This boundary study disrupts 50 years of community ties, impacting only 40 students a year from DuFif. The disruption far outweighs any benefit, creating instability without clear gain. Our DuFif student population actually benefits each of the four factors mentioned in the boundary study, and by excluding DuFif, the Wooton numbers get worse. Since I graduated in 2006, MCPS enrollment has grown only 15%, yet the budget has surged 20% since the pandemic alone. Our county now faces a recession, with many residents experiencing job losses and pay freezes since January. This economic reality should be reflected on local budgets. And what about the long-term costs of operating Crown as the county's population declines? Unchecked expansion isn't sustainable. With budget uncertainty, can you guarantee Crown will offer programs like Wooton's Theater or Swim Team for my kids? Past leadership failed, we know, because we're holding the settlement bag, and you all get to clean up the mess. There's no holding school plans for renovations. Our community's round one input on the boundary was ignored in favor of an unapproved regional model. Over 1,600 residents signed an online petition, and yet, MCPS has not responded. I now bring to you a copy of over 500 physical signatures on a letter that we've obtained. Now, we're told the elementary boundary study is next. Even if high schools stay the same, DuFif kids could still lose friends when lines are redrawn. CIP, regionalization, and boundaries, three major changes at once, with our kids caught in the middle. The sudden mention of Crown as a holding school highlights how disconnected this process has been. I'm supportive of Crown being a holding school, but we urge the board to keep DuFif in the Wooton cluster. Don't make the same mistakes as your predecessors. We know the deal for Crown land wasn't sold to address a Wooton or DuFif issue, yet it's become one. Go back and look at the minutes. Wooton is in overcapacity, any of the projections. Please leave the Wooton cluster intact. Vote no on the proposed plans, and meet with our DuFif community to create a solution that's truly for the best. And I have one final question for Ms. Zimmerman. Did you know that Olivier is in your district? That just testified. Thank you.
Anne Marie, please go ahead.
Hello, good evening. My name is Anne Marie Luciano. I'm a 13-year resident of DuFif and a proud parent of an eighth grader at Frost and a 10th grader at Wooton. I'm also an attorney, and like any case that I handle, I delve into all these documents and issues. And with great pleasure, Dr. Taylor, I read your very long CIP budget. I love, as an Italian, the boldness and bluntness of it. And so I'm going to be bold and blunt tonight. We have a very easy ask. Just keep DuFif with Frost and Wooton. And there are three reasons why, and when you go back and consider this, those reasons line up with your four principles. First, we all can agree that executing a plan based on a faulty premise is wasteful. The Crown-Domascus Boundary Study was meant to address overutilization and holdings, the need for holding schools. The board spent a lot of money, of our taxpayer dollars, and used Flow Analytics to develop two different sets of options. The second set of options was released one week before this new population data. Why? Why release it before the data that made everyone pivot and say, oh, let's maybe use Crown? I love the idea of using Crown as a holding school. That's a great beginning of pivoting, but why would the data come after the analysis? This is a sunk-cost fallacy that we cannot perpetuate. What is the fallacy? The fallacy is deciding to move forward well because we invested all this time and money already, instead of pivoting. I know that you all are bold and you can pivot. I know that you all want to correct mistakes. What are those mistakes? My second point is to point those out to you. The regional study for the academic programs. We, every document, including the documents that the board showed yesterday on the webinar, showed DuFif still with Region Four, the Wooton cluster. Yay, yay, yay. We're all, say, we're taking screenshots. Oh, well, we're in Region Four. We're in Region Four. But according to the boundary study, we're in Region Five with Crown. So I don't know if what was meant to be, if it's an error. I hope that you are right about the region study and wrong about your options. But again, why was this error made? Were we an afterthought? Did somebody at the end are like, oh, what should we do with DuFif? Oh, they're the smallest school. We'll just move them over to Crown. Now, the most important point of this, why should you not move us to Crown and Lakeland? Because of danger and safety. DuFif is south of Route 28, along with all the other elementary schools that are south of Route 28. Moving us would force our students to ride their bikes. These students would ride their bikes to socialize with their peers to Lakeland and to Crown, crossing four lanes of traffic. Also, DuFif Elementary, it's 50th year, is this year. The principal's in the back room. It's named after John DuFif. The historical site is in North Potomac, where the census has us in North Potomac. You're moving us outside of North Potomac. It's like taking the Barack Obama Elementary School in Chicago Heights and moving it and saying, you guys are no longer going to be with the Obama. You're going to go to high school and middle school with other people. It doesn't make any sense. Please correct your error and keep us with Wooton and Frost. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Di Nicola?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Megan Di Nicola, and I am president of the Silver Spring International Middle School PTSA. I am lucky to be part of and represent such a beautifully diverse, globally oriented Sims community. We have some of the most dedicated and passionate teachers and staff in the county, and with help of our amazing current administration, we are stronger, more united, and have more momentum forward than ever before. After more than 20 years of advocacy, asking for renovations to our building, we appreciate that MCPS has finally heard and understood that our students deserve better facilities. The closure announcement, however, came as a shock to our community. First, I must ask that MCPS meet with Sims immediately and explain the analysis and data that led to the proposal to close. Is this in the best interest of our community? What avenues, if any, were explored to preserve our school through renovation or full replacement onsite or elsewhere? MCPS has a responsibility to meaningfully engage with our community and has not yet done so. Second, Sims continues to have well-documented urgent facilities hazards, which must be addressed immediately. These fixes must be made for any student occupancy, whether as a permanent school or holding school. There is $44 million allocated for holding school improvements in the current proposal, but none currently allocated for Sims. Solutions need not be elegant nor overdesigned. I ask for immediate funding for the following. Roof and gutter replacements to prevent ongoing leaks and subsequent mold and IAQ issues. Mold remediation and replacement of finishes in affected classrooms. HVAC system replacement to ensure safe air quality and temperature control. Address the infamous Stairwell 7 in one way or another, as simply as possible, which has posed serious safety concerns for decades. Outdoor safety improvements that will connect our students along the nearly three-quarter-mile path that they take to their outdoor fields from gym class each and every day. Restrict public use of our track and field and protect our students who are 11 to 14 years old. The CIP seeks to improve facilities for more than 2,500 middle schoolers in Silver Spring, which is commendable. We have serious concerns, however, about 1,500-seat middle schools, especially in our diverse communities with an abundance of emergent multilingual learners, high farms rates, and many new immigrant families. MCPS must consult with admin and educators to understand the potential impact of school size and demographics on academics, community building, and student well-being. Again, we need clear and meaningful dialogue on this and not rushed decision-making. Finally, the CIP does not move forward with Sims. If the CIP does move forward with Sims closure, MCPS must support our students and staff through these transition years. MCPS must address the real and impending issues surrounding staff retention and incentivize our staff to stay with the actions such as retention bonuses, guaranteed placements, and a voice in shaping the path forward. Sims is finally on a trajectory toward change in academic growth. We do not want to see current students suffer. Sims is not a sinking ship. We are a vibrant community and deserve a seat at the table.
Alexander Sarav.
Good evening. My name is Sasha Tsarev. I'm the proud father of a second grader and fourth grader in the DuFif Elementary School service area. We're the third smallest elementary school in the county, but we care deeply about our community. I'm here today to share my concerns about the Crown Boundary Study, which are echoed by many others, as you can tell by the attendance here, and as I'm sure you'll see further with the letters and emails coming your way. When the board approved the plans to build Crown High School, many were rightly concerned about the overcrowding of schools across MCPS. But with the recent updates to enrollment projections, the context surrounding the Crown Boundary Study has changed. In the Wooton cluster, none of the schools are operating above capacity, nor are they projected to exceed capacity in the future. All four options recently unveiled for the Crown Boundary Study removed DuFif from the Wooton cluster. It's an unnecessary disruption that would negatively impact our community. Under this proposal, we're the only Wooton community in the existing contiguous zone to be removed from the cluster, and this change fails to improve on any of the four factors evaluated under Policy FAA. Without DuFif, Wooton High School and Frost Middle School become less diverse. There's no improvement to utilization, and we will have an adverse impact to stability by reassigning school boundaries for families that aren't experiencing any of the overcrowding that may have been a concern in other clusters. Adding to the complexity and confusion of the situation, MCPS is conducting a regional program analysis concurrent with the Boundary Study. Just last week, during the board's work session, MCPS staff told you that this map represented the most recent program regions. I've overlaid and highlighted the DuFif service area to show that on this map, we're in Region Four. Yet, the Boundary Study maps created by Flow Analytics that were shared during that same week showed DuFif in Region Five. What are we to take away from the conflicting information being provided to us? I ask that MCPS takes its time and makes sure these different studies result in one cohesive plan that makes sense. And lastly, I want to point out that the four factors in Policy FAA fail to address concerns about safety. But in light of recent tragic events, we should not make decisions without giving it careful consideration. DuFif's current boundaries provide accessibility for walking and biking to our cluster neighbors in Stone Mill and Travilla. It's not just about transportation to and from school, but about the ties that our children will make to learn and play outside of school, which we all know is vital to the well-being of an increasingly digital generation. The new boundary proposals isolate DuFif as the only Crown Cluster community south of Route 28, which could force many of our students to cross up to six lanes of high-speed traffic to see their friends. This adds a new hazard to think about, and we should make a thorough assessment of safety impacts before finalizing any boundary decisions. I respectfully urge the board to keep DuFif with our neighbors attending Frost and Wooton so we can preserve the stability and community connections our families have built. Thank you.
Rosaria Tucci.
Great, thank you. I'm Ro Tucci, co-president of Slago Creek Elementary PTA. Dr. Taylor, I appreciate your effort to have a comprehensive vision. I am a champion of your videos. I've sent you many. I've sent you many letters on decisions that others did not agree with, and I was in agreement. And I want to continue to be one. I know you like slogans, so help me help you. The challenge is one of information. It's not one of emotion, not of history, not of not wanting to make hard decisions. But we really do feel like we are not given the data, the tools, and the options to have faith that closing Sims and Sligo is the optimal way forward. The arguments did feel, just to be honest, a bit disingenuous, a little faulty, a little inaccurate. The purple line, which MCPS asked to have a stop there, it's untenable, but it's tenable for kids for another 20 years, just a little bit faulty. There are hundreds of unanswered questions, some fundamental. I've got pages here of 30 of the most basic. Some are consequential, that impact costs, community, safety, traffic patterns. So how long is this going to be a holding school? For 20 years? I'm not sure that's a holding school. How does this align with the Boundary Studies? How are you coordinating with county lands? What are the enrollment rates, the growth? Is it actually in our area? What happens when you actually only get 75% of the budget? What are the plans then? So we're concerned about the option, like, for example, what were the options that you looked at? The ones out there right now are looking at closing the few remaining parks we have in this area. It's .5 miles from the fifth largest city in Maryland, right? What are the options you looked at? Vacant buildings in Down County. Our colleague said, when there's a looming recession out there, how many vacant pieces of property are we going to have? Today, I just found out that there's a school for sale right in Tacoma, right? So we want to see those options. We want to see the cost deferentials. We want to walk us through that journey with you, how you got here. So you've given us not even the 30,000-foot vision. I'd say maybe the 500,000-foot vision. It looks good on paper, but we really need to understand the planning. So we don't lose money. We're not in endless construction. We're not in an unsafe environment. Fortunately, in Silver Spring, we know a thing or two about those things. Cue the purple line. So the second issue is really about lack of authentic community engagement. Okay, really, you really do need to talk to the affected communities. We do want, are looking at your own policies right now about talking to the communities before making these decisions. So we'll get you a copy of that. There's a lot of rumors flying around. Without good information and community engagement, these rumors will soar. The pool, the money on central offices, right? Those will soar. A lot of information out there. I'm tempted to use ChatGPT to get through it all. Joke, not joke. But the last thing I really want to say is, we're here for you. We want to be partners in this. We're problem solvers. But this community has felt ignored for a while. We've received lots of broken promises. I just want to say this one last thing.
Thank you so much.
It does feel like we're a dumping ground. You know, we're taking a 20-year hit for the county, and that does feel like an equity issue. And I don't want our community to feel like that. It's a diverse, bright community. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I did my best try. Let me try again. Can you show me again how to do it?
Raklitis.
Raklitis, yes. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor and members of the Board of Education. I am the current PTA president for Sligo Creek Elementary School as well. We thank you for our interest, for your interest in our Salamander students. Finding a new location and building a new school for Sligo Creek is the first step of your investment in Down County, but it feels like the last thought. The timeline is incredibly challenging. The last time the Board tried to find a new site for Sligo Creek, it was a three-year site selection process. This is the densest part of the county, so selecting a site in a place where you could design, landscape, build, and get community support in three and a half years might not be realistic. We request to know what the site selection process entails. What will the school size be? We jumped from 630 students to about 680 students just in the past year. How can we partner with you to find creative solutions? Sites in the area might be better for two smaller schools. Investment in urban design could better suit that space. How can the space at the track be better utilized so we could perhaps build onsite? Are there potential changes to Highland View's plan to absorb Sligo Creek students? How will an elementary school Boundary Study be carefully interwoven into the plan so it's not a rushed process and keeps walkability at the heart of our community? How will the French immersion program fit into that Boundary Study? Please know we want to partner with you, but we are concerned that if step one can't be solved in the short timeframe you've allowed, where does that leave us? We just don't want to be left with nothing in the CIP because there wasn't a realistic, adequate time allowed to solve this very complex piece of the puzzle. We applaud that MCPS has instituted the FCI system to collect ongoing data. However, in combining the Sligo Creek and Sims reports, our report doesn't paint an accurate picture of our school. It doesn't show our safety issues. The elementary school students must cross a parking lot to the playground. The hallway connecting Sligo Creek and Sims cannot be sealed for purposes of the school's emergency egress. So if the sites become holding schools, this could mean that a high school student could walk into the elementary school. We have one small field for the kids to play, and it has so little grass that we've called it the Dust Bowl, and it's caused asthma problems. There are no photos of our library or gym, only photos of the ones for Sims in that report. We are concerned that if the hard decisions need to be made, and whether due to site selection issues or budget constraints, that Sligo Creek will get little to nothing of the initial proposed investment because our ranking is artificially low compared to our actual needs. Our school community has many opinions at this moment. The one thing we can all agree on is that we need more information. So we look forward to seeing you at our school soon. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for these six testimony and calling the next six to come to the front.
Security. Security. Thank you.
Aditi Shah, Robin Custer, John Sorrenti, Isabel Hasty, Daniela Harvey, and William Aditi Shah, you can start.
Good late evening. My name is Aditi Shah or Aditi Shah. I am here to talk about Damascus and asking you to implore you to take action. Slide, please. I am a parent with two children in the Damascus Cluster. My oldest is in fifth grade. Oh, my God, he was here. I didn't cry when he was here. And my youngest is in first grade at Woodfield. I moved to the community because of the schools and close-knit family feel, and because of this, I served as the PTA president at Woodfield to advocate and bring fun for our kids. Slide. I stand before you deeply concerned, or sit before you, about the future of our community's school. While our elementary schools have significant issues like a failing HVAC at Woodfield like everyone else, I'm here to focus on Damascus High School and the impact on the ongoing delays and conditions that will have on our children. Damascus High School was built 75 years ago. You've heard that today. We have been promised a replacement for many years now. Slide, please. With the project included in nearly every capital improvement plan since 2010, yet, as of 2025, construction has not even begun. The projected completion date has been pushed again all the way to 2031. I note that in 2011, the Board of Education stated that Northwood construction would occur after Damascus, while Northwood broke ground last year. If the current delays continue, when my oldest son graduates from Damascus High School, the building will be over 80 years old. Slide. A building that MCPS itself has documented is having serious structural issues, including mold in several areas. The presence of mold is not just an inconvenience. Slide, please. It poses real health risks to our children, including respiratory issues and worsened allergies. MCPS's own facility condition assessment confirmed mold existence in Damascus High School. Yet despite this, the school remains operational. No active construction or remediation has begun. Slide, please. Dr. Taylor, in August of '25, you said, "We certainly don't want people to have to show up to work or show up to school and feel as though their safety is at risk." A month later, in reference to the mold and HVAC issues, you said, "The ongoing issue that the school district will have to contend with for quite some time, it will take many years to correct." But yet, healthy learning environment is a core MCPS mission. Slide, please. What makes the situation even more troubling is that MCPS plans to rezone additional students to Damascus starting in FY '27, increasing student enrollment in a school that is not only aging and not made for this capacity, but not now known to be unsafe in parts. You have heard from other clusters today about this issue. When is the start date for construction? How will Damascus High School handle the influx of students if we continue to delay? The math is not mathing here. My family and others have moved this community with the expectation that our children would learn and grow in a safe, healthy environment. We see other Montgomery County schools prioritize for urgent renovations. I hear others saying the same, so I'm going to say this: Damascus students deserve no less. I will also say, as of right now, I am resentful that we are all having to be pitted against each other to say, pick me, pick me. Nonetheless, our community has waited for too long. We urge the Board to urgently accelerate construction plans so that no more children have to attend this school in a building deemed unsafe by documented assessments. Please, take action. Thank you.
Robin Custer.
Yes, good evening. I'm here from the Sligo Creeks and Sims community. My kids went there, and they had a good experience. I'm delighted that finally attention is being paid to these schools. There has been 30 years of failures and broken promises, and perhaps that can change. But the current plan to close these facilities came as a huge shock. We were blindsided completely by this, and this is a huge, huge change. I'm not going to go over the points made so much better than I can by the previous speakers. They were all terrific, and I support every single thing that they said. I would say just a few quick things. First, MCPS has not explained in detail why these schools are not salvageable. Surely, the superintendent has provided the Board with a presentation on why these schools must go. If he has, he should provide it to us. And if he hasn't, he needs to. Second, on holding schools. It seems to me bluntly that MCPS wants a holding school, other communities in the downtown, Down County Cluster want a holding school, and Sims and Sligo Creek are the sacrificial goats for that. If that is not true, then I suggest somebody tell us what the Plan B is. You need a holding school? Well, what's it going to be if it's not Sims? If there's no answer to that, then it's obvious what is going on here. We know that there is lack of transparency and that there's just simply been insufficient information. I think it is disingenuous to believe that there are no actual candidates for the location of a new Sligo Creek. There must have some candidates. Why have we not been told? Why is it a secret? Why won't be told until long after decisions are made? That's not acceptable. I also believe that the insufficient community input mentioned by the previous speakers is absolutely true. It is not right that this, that these hearings are held over on this side of the county at this time of day, a school night. No, we should have briefings down county where people can actually come and visit. That would allow actual community input. Overall, you want walkable schools, but what you're offering is more busing with students coming in from elsewhere and our students bussed out. That means 20 extra buses each way on our roads, which are limited. A holding school would add another 40. This is, this is not really something that our local roads can handle, especially with the purple line, which is, after all, not at all a safety issue. I think that is smoke. So, that's it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Sorrenti, and I'm a board member on the Bell's Mill Elementary PTA. I've got a fifth grader and a third grader at Bell's Mill and a three-year-old son who will start kindergarten there in 2027. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My written testimony discusses our support for Superintendent Dr. Taylor's proposal to use the Crown High School building as a holding school during the renovations to Wooton McGruder and Damascus High Schools. We've already had some testimony today about safe routes to school, and the Board has rightly recognized the importance of those. So I'd like to focus my testimony today on our concerns with the two proposed options in the Boundary Study that would split Bell's Mill Elementary into two middle schools, some students going to Cabin John and some students going to Herbert Hoover Middle School. Our primary concern with this is that it will create dangerous routes for walkers or bikers to Hoover Middle School and make many students who can currently walk to Cabin John drive or take a bus to Hoover. Currently, all Bell's Mill students will attend Cabin John Middle School. This makes sense. Bell's Mill is one of the few truly walkable communities to Cabin John Middle School, where roughly 250 students live within walking distance. The two schools are on the same street, less than a quarter mile apart, with sidewalks and paved paths running between them. In fact, there are no other elementary schools affected by the Boundary Study that are as close to a middle school as Bell's Mill is to Cabin John. MC DOT also has plans to build additional sidewalks along Bell's Mill Road that would make it safer to walk or bike for students living west of these schools. Given the proximity of Bell's Mill and Cabin John and the surrounding walkable community, it makes logical and practical sense that all Bell's Mill students continue to articulate at Cabin John. Splitting Bell's Mill would send a significant number of students to Hoover and require them to cross Tuckerman Lane, a high-volume, busy street that is not designed for children on foot or bike. According to a project report regarding accessibility on Tuckerman Lane, the average annual daily traffic on this road is approximately 8,300 vehicles per day, and the speed limit already exceeds what is recommended for an area connector. There are no sidewalks on either side of a large portion of Tuckerman that borders on many of the neighborhoods that would articulate to Hoover. Of the seven streets that connect with Tuckerman between Seven Locks Road and Hoover, only two of them have sidewalks. And the only sidewalk on Tuckerman that leads to Hoover begins at Churchill High School and is on the north side of the street, which requires students coming from the south to cross that street to finally get to the sidewalk. And there's no bike lanes on any part of Tuckerman west of Seven Locks. A number of students who already live within the walk zone for Cabin John and would be able to walk to that school through calm, safe neighborhood streets would now have to walk along and at some point cross Tuckerman Lane, creating significant safety concerns. Proposals that divide students from Bell's Mill into multiple school assignments therefore remove existing safe walking and biking options and create new safety hazards. My third-grade daughter currently walks to Bell's Mill with her friends, but would be unable to walk to Hoover because of these safety concerns. In short, any option that does not split Bell's Mill Elementary School is the best option. Thank you.
Isabel Hasty.
Hello. My name is Isabel Hasty, and I have a daughter in first grade at Sligo Creek Elementary School. I'm speaking today because in all of the discussions that I've heard about the CIP, there's been very little mention of the French immersion program at Sligo Creek or the language and IB programs at Sims. As we consider these large-scale changes proposed by the CIP, we cannot let these valuable programs be an afterthought. Sligo Creek's French immersion program is one of MCPS's shining achievements. It just celebrated 50 years and serves as a model for other school systems across the U.S. As we consider the possible relocation of Sligo Creek, we should make sure to preserve the strengths of the program and look for opportunities to make it better. The program has exceptional teachers from around the world who bring diverse perspectives and rich experiences. The diversity of this school district is one of its greatest assets, and the opportunity to meaningfully connect with diverse Francophone cultures reinforces what we all value about MCPS. I hope we can be intentional about the future of these programs and explore ways that it can better serve the community. Each year, hundreds of children are waitlisted. Is there an opportunity here to expand access? How will MCPS engage the Sligo Creek teachers and staff in shaping the program's future? Where will the Sims language and IB programs go? Will elementary immersion students continue to have access to advanced language education in middle school? This surprise proposal has shaken the community's confidence and made it hard for families to trust that MCPS is being open and thoughtful about such a major change. In addition to having a daughter who lotteryed in at Sligo Creek, I also have a son who is zoned for Piney Branch. Last spring, I attended a series of four meetings held over two months to discuss the potential renovation of the school. In that case, MCPS clearly did its due diligence and engaged our community. Yet, when it comes to the potential Sligo Creek relocation, we were caught off guard with no warning or prior conversation. I'm not an expert on MCPS outreach procedures, but I don't understand why two schools only two miles apart got such different levels of communication. two miles apart got such different levels of communication. Regardless of how we move forward, MCPS must invite genuine community input. I hope that MCPS will use this, I hope that MCPS will use this opportunity to rebuild trust through honesty, transparency, and true partnership with its communities. Thank you.
Daniela Hawvi.
Hello. My name is Daniela Hawvi, and I am a science teacher at Silver Spring International Middle School. This is my third year at Sims. 10 years ago, you would have found me in the same classrooms as a student. It was my home school. My neighbors went to school with me, and my closest friend was in all of my classes. I still live in the community. My neighbors still go to school with me, and that closest friend is watching me testify now. I have the honor to work with teachers who supported me at age 11 and still support me today. Sims at its core is a community school. In fact, it's more than a community school. It's a family school. My sister went there. My mother has worked there for 15 years. In the audience tonight, there are staff members whose children are current, past, and hopefully, future members of our school. Right now, we are fighting for our community. When Blair was first built in 1934, 91 years ago, and then got converted to Sims and Sligo Creek 26 years ago, we were promised Sims would be renovated. It wasn't. None of you were on the Board of Education then, and this is not a problem you caused. However, it is a problem you inherited. Dr. Taylor, our superintendent, wrote us an email when we were concerned our school wouldn't be ready in time for students this August. He told us minor renovations were like putting a Band-Aid on a bullet wound, and he was correct. However, instead of repairing the bullet wound, he has decided to rip off the Band-Aid and watch us bleed out. We have been told our school was closing for a number of reasons. It did not take a magnifying glass to find the holes in the reasons and the solutions. Danger of the purple line? The purple line will open a few years before our school closes. The, our complaints about the building? We advocate because we love our community and our students. If you shut down all of the schools who advocate for themselves, you will be out of work, too. Up-county schools complained about Crown reopening, and now the whole building, boundary study is being reevaluated. Maybe that time, money, and effort could be used fixing our schools. If we put everyone into a rebuilt Sligo and Eastern, we will have too many middle schoolers in those buildings. We are combining schools with the neediest populations into mega schools. Class sizes will rise, they will get less attention, and if history is any indication, they will be ignored and neglected. It feels like redlining. Would our community be neglected if our demographics were different, if our test scores were different? Our community and our school deserves more, and I am asking for your support in that: keeping Sims open. Thank you for your time.
William Malden. William Malden.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Hank. Thank all of you. I'm Will Malden. I'm a parent of three daughters in this great school district, and they actually all three went to a French immersion program here in Rockville at Maryvale. Wonderful program, by the way. But I'm here to talk, to talk about competition for other schools, specifically county-wide magnet schools, where competition is really, really important. For me, the competition began ages ago when I was a senior at the Mississippi School for Mathematics and Science and came to this county for the first time for the National Science Bowl. I immediately encountered students from Blair's STEM Magnet Program. I was terrified. I resented them, and they trounced us in the National Science Bowl. But, but after that, I met a lot of Montgomery County kids, and that helped me make a decision to move to the area later in my life. We moved into a beautiful country lane near Burtonsville, where houses still cost $400,000 or so. Flash forward to this year, where my, the oldest of my three daughters finished the Humanities Program at Eastern and got a coveted spot at Blair's STEM Magnet Program. Nearly every day, she tells me what she learned in physics, and I'm, I'm pretty astounded because she's doing projectile motion with air resistance without calculus in ninth grade in a semester-long course. We did the same physics class in 11th grade at the Mississippi School for Math and Science, and we never did air assistance. I had to ask a calculus teacher about that. So, the point of all this is that the top students and the teachers are competing for spots at the Blair Magnet Program from across the whole county. And, you know, I've tutored kids from New York Cyvison and Bronx Science Schools, and they, they're nothing compared to what we have here. We should be proud of this. Would you divide their schools into regions? Would you have the Upper West Side go to one math and science program? Would you have the Greenwich Village go to another? Would you have Lower Manhattan go to Cyvison? I, I don't, I don't think it really makes sense because Mr. Schaefer, the physics teacher, needs the most accelerated students to produce the kind of lifelong learners, to produce the kind of science, scientists and engineers that have made this program great, that have attracted to these people to this county. As a Mississippian, I know that school leaders sometimes divide, devise ways to separate schools or academic programs, but they rarely end up being equal. People who can't afford homes in certain parts of the county, Chaby Chase, where I went to the National Science Bowl, they get priced out of what's left of the Blair Cap and, and STEM Magnet Programs, where the locals will get an easier path to admission. These days, I just wanted to say that, by the way, one of your own school board members, I believe, is from our part of the county in the Northeast and is at the Blair Cap Magnet Program. I hope he wouldn't do anything to get away, in the way of the student member of the board like that. These days, there are attacks on elite institutions from, from all sides. And they had, whether, whether, whether the motivation is for cutting science to Harvard University or Johns Hopkins or reducing staff at the NIH, we need these institutions. And if you hurt them and if you take away their funding, we all suffer. Thank you.
I think that is all the, no, no. I think that is all I have so far. Am I missing anyone? Okay. Before we adjourn, do board members have any additional questions for staff to follow up? I'm looking to my left. Ms. Rivera.
Yes, I, I just wanted to follow up on Twinbrook and Linkages to learning. I have a lot of questions about that. I know Linkages is, is a county program.
Right.
And I know it's funded by HHS. So, am I getting warm? Okay.
You are right.
So, so is that the issue?
But why do we need a new wing to, to have, to have Linkages to learning? I don't understand.
So, the, the county can provide the Linkages services without additional construction. For a full Linkages suite or some of the fuller construction, that is typically associated with ongoing construction because it reduces the cost of adding that additional space. But the services themselves is, is really a different, a different conversation and not specifically tied to construction. But as you're saying, that is a county program. It's funded through the Department of Health and Human Services, and those decisions are made with a, a county group that looks at criteria across the communities in the county. And then, of course, it's funding contingent.
So, are we going to do a follow-up on that?
We can certainly speak with the county, but it's not, I mean, we'd be happy to do that.
And, and I guess this is for a bigger conversation with the county. They provide a lot of services, and I think it's very important for the community to understand what services are provided because we really don't have control over those, those services, even though they're housed in our schools. I was just surprised because with a farms population of over 70%, it does not make sense to me that they don't have a Linkages program. So, I think it's worth, but maybe we can actually have the county come to one of our meetings, especially HHS, to give a presentation on some of the programs they actually do funding or not do funding on. So, we can actually, because they, they fund our nurses, they fund that, they fund out some after-school programs and so on. So I think it might be beneficial to all if we can, can, can do that. And to regard to Twinbrook, there were also some, I think this is a school where somebody testified that they have to close the doors from the outside rather than the inside. I think, I'm sorry, there was a lot of testimony. No, this is not, okay. Well, whoever that school is, I'm very concerned at this point because you should not be closing the doors from the outside. So I think that's an easy fix. Thank you. So, but I think our, I think our staff, I think our staff got that. Sorry, it's a little, it's a little bit late in the night. And anything with pedestrian safety with Hoover and so on, I think we really need to consider. And I think that's pretty much because my, I, I stopped thinking after nine o'clock. My brain's a mush right now. Oh, and I think that's a school with the water fountains, where there's only two water fountains.
That's the.
Twinbrook. So we can, yeah, so we can, we can look at that as well. And I just want to say, the heartfelt testimony for everybody, we heard you, but again, there are limited funds that we wish we could do more, but the reality is there are some very hard decisions that are going to have to be made. But this advocacy that you're doing here tonight has to be, also be done with across, across the street at the county council, because at the end of the day, that's the funding that we get that we need to make all these hard decisions with, and I hope that you will do that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Matoya.
Thank you. Yes, I also want to speak to Twinbrook because I want to note, and I'm looking straight from the MCPS data that was provided to, I believe, our state legislators by district. Twinbrook has 75% of their students are students of color, are Latino or Black. 70%, over 70% are farms, over 40% are emerging multilingual learners. And then when we look at proficiency rates, they're in the 20s, more or less. So it's extremely concerning to me, one, that the county would purportedly place services to schools and children, especially in these, with these numbers, based on a whole facility upgrade, basically, right? A whole wing. But then to then find out right now that actually that may not even be the case, I just, irrespective of what the facts actually are in terms of whether they do need a new wing or don't, we know that Twinbrook has needs and needs services. And so I'm concerned, and I recognize, right, Dr. Taylor, you've only been here for a year. I want to be very mindful of that. But we still could have provided services to the Twinbrook community, even if it couldn't have been Linkages, if it was true that they needed a new wing, right? Let's just say, argue for argument's sake that that's true. We still could have provided some sort of services, even if it couldn't have been Linkages. So my question is, what is needed for Linkages to be put into place in Twinbrook? Can we just confirm what, what, whether they're, whether it's DHHS saying, yes, we need this or not, and figure out what that deal is? But also, what are we going to do about providing services to the Twinbrook community? And I recognize this is a facilities hearing, but it came through us for facilities, but that doesn't mean we can't address the need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matoya, for pointing out this is facilities. I understand tonight there's some testimony that cross over to the boundaries, so I want to remind everyone this is a facility hearing. Ms. Sture.
I would like to say that I did a wonderful visit to Twinbrook last year and went for their big wellness day, which was really well-attended and had lots of people there. And the people, it's a community school, so I think the problem is, it's like the services are piecemeal together. It's not as strategic as Linkages would be because I did visit, it's a community school, and there were folks there. Also, Rockville provides a social worker, I believe, there as well.
If you need any details, I can give you the whole history.
Awesome.
Yes, I would be happy to clarify because some of the, some of the statements that are being made are not accurate.
Thank you.
Excellent. So I agreed, Linkages should definitely be there. I just did visit the school and visited the Wellness Center, which was, you guys did a great job with the Wellness Room there. So, thank you. And also want to say that I've watched Twinbrook come in and out of the CIP for many years. I'm also confused why it's so far down the list and it dropped, you know, from where the FCI is based on these other factors that we have in the framework. So I would like to see where the Twinbrook score is in the rest of the framework because I was very surprised to see it so far down the list, based on what the original FCI was and the issues that we know are there. And I'd like to look into the plumbing issue, especially the plumbing issue, because that was disturbing. So the other issue I wanted to bring up is Sims and Sligo Creek Elementary School. Obviously, we need to do some more engagement there, so I would like to know or make sure that there's a plan to go visit and talk to families and get some engagement and also talk about this option. And I've heard a lot that they'd like to know the elementary school, what is on the table for sites? So those are the type of things I'd like to ask.
Yeah, it's, it's helpful to know that per policy, we actually can't identify a site without going through a site selection process. So folks who flagged that, that's a, that's an important part of that, and community engagement is central in that. For the commentary that was tied to timeline, it's very aggressive. We do feel like we could meet it, so we appreciate the sensitivity there, but we're, we're seeing the same thing that you're seeing, so look forward to carrying on the conversation.
Ms. Sevesgi.
Yes, since we have people here, do you know Dr. Taylor today or maybe at a future meeting, what is happening with the French immersion program at the school?
Yes, absolutely. It's our desire to carry on programs and if anything, expand them.
But if the school is not going to.
Relocated?
Will they go to different, to different?
So, so the French immersion program at Sligo Creek Elementary School, if we're relocating the school, we, we would relocate the program. And similarly, if we were going to split a school population, we would replicate programs in multiple places.
Okay, look forward to hearing, look for, look forward to hearing more details about that in our upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Mumburman.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for staying this late. I also wanted to touch on the, the water at Twinbrook. I can't imagine my elementary school classroom functioning without a water fountain inside the classroom. Would have been wild. Then I know that this is a facilities hearing, but as we're going to move forward and talk about boundaries and things going forward, we were hearing about the Duffie zoning being different for different options. I think it was option four that potentially had the error. That, you know, could be something that we talk about in the future. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Tonight is a facility hearing. We'll have another one on the 28th. However, we will hold a community boundary hearing in the year. Right now, the, in the, in the spring, when the plans come to the Board of Education, we will hold this hearing, we will hold hearings. So right now, it's the hearing is, I'm sorry that.
We can talk afterwards.
So, tonight is a facility hearing. On the 28th is another facility hearing. We will hold future boundary study hearings. So I thank everyone for coming in, and, and then we will have this conversation on the 28th. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.